The Board of Selectmen and School Committee, I'm Neil Witczynski, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and to my right and to your left is David Pollak, Chair of the School Committee. And the two of us are going to be starting off with a short presentation to set the context of this public hearing. The bulk of this meeting is to hear from you about the Selectmen and School Committee's vote to expand consideration of the sites for our ninth school to include land at Pine Manor College. If you wish to speak, there are sign-up sheets in the hallway. Just a couple of opening remarks. Education is Brookline's brand, and the Brookline School System is the community's crown jewel. It's an important reason. Many of us moved here, and many of us have stayed here. We're here tonight because of our unwavering commitment to provide the very best possible education that we can to each and every one of our children who are enrolled in our public schools. That commitment has led us to consider whether to study Pine Manor's property as a potential site for a public elementary school. Because we've seriously outgrown the schools we have, we need to build another one right away. I'm going to ask Mr. Pollak to talk a little about the problem we're trying to solve and the options we're considering.
So, welcome, everyone. Ten years ago, only two of our -- excuse me, two of our elementary schools served more than 550 students. Now they all do. We have absorbed more than 1,500 elementary students over a dozen years and expect hundreds more. This 40 percent growth is the equivalent of more than three schools' worth based on the average enrollment at the beginning of the expansion, all squeezed into our existing eight buildings. Now, it's important to understand that this chart doesn't show growth in the number of kids living in each school district, just the number who we've been able to fit in each building based on where we could add classrooms and using the broad assignment buffers that were enacted by the town in 2012. Class sizes have also grown significantly, and we now have 80 classrooms with 22 or more students. Hallways, cafeterias, and gyms are all overcrowded. We have classrooms that act as hallways, hallways that serve as classrooms. Children are learning in stairwells, and locker rooms have become classrooms. Children eat lunch starting before 10:30 a.m., and they take physical education at the Brookline Teen Center. We've added 58 classrooms at our eight schools. We've built classrooms, we've divided classrooms, made classrooms out of hallways and libraries and offices. We're renting space for classrooms. We've leased modular classrooms, and at this point, we have no more room for classrooms. More importantly, while we've been adding all these classrooms and classroom teachers, we haven't been adding all the other spaces that are essential to schooling. Gyms, cafeterias, auditoriums, and libraries are all now way too small for the number of kids in our buildings. The same is true for smaller spaces. In the 2015 override, we added many much-needed math and literacy specialists, guidance counselors, and nurses, but we didn't add any place for them to work with their students. Here are just a few examples of what this looks and feels like. At Baker School, we have a music room and two art rooms directly beneath the gym, which means students are trying to play music with loud basketballs and football slumping above. At Baker, we also have the principal and two vice principals sharing office space, which means they can't have simultaneous confidential conversations. At Driscoll, we have five lunches, starting as early as 10:15 and as late as 12:50. At Pierce, we have a second-grade classroom in a key tunnel between two buildings, meaning that some 200 students from Pierce Primary need to walk through that classroom to get to lunch and specials every day. At Heath, students need to walk through an active Spanish class to get to this classroom. The room is so small that there isn't space enough for enough desks, and so kids sit on the floor. At Lawrence, we've begun to carve up the library, adding a middle-school classroom into that space, and on and on. Over the last two decades -- excuse me, over the last decade, it hasn't been quite that long, we've had two site-location studies, four enrollment-projection studies, two site-selection processes, and hundreds of public meetings like this one tonight. At this point, we're considering three options: to move forward with our current plans by utilizing a land swap, building at Pine Manor, or building on the smaller Baldwin School parcel. A year ago, on October 13th, in fact, 2016, we chose a site. We voted right here at a table in this room. And that site was to tear down and replace our small Baldwin -- existing small Baldwin School. This is a site that we own, and it's adjacent to the wonderful Sewell Recreation Center. Here's the preliminary design that has been developed by our educators, architects, and building committee. And this is like a three-minute video that's also available on the web and that we showed at Town Meeting. The school is formed into three learning communities or grade clusters, capped with solar panels and connected by multi-level active learning environments. The shape, scale, and orientation of the building elements reflect the educational program, provide generous natural light and views, and meet zoning parameters including size, height, setback, and open space. The pre-K to 2 cluster, or neighborhood, is located at the north end of the site and has its own playground, as well as drop-off spaces at Heath Street. There's a limited service -- access service drive along the east side of the building, which brings us around to the main pedestrian-only entrance to the school on the south and facing the Sewell Recreation Center building. You can see at the southwest corner of the site the separate play structures for the bigger kids, as well as the open playground area. Because of the topography of the site, the main entrance is actually on the second floor with administration, guidance, and the library immediately adjacent to the lobby. A few steps in, it becomes a balcony, kind of like a main street connecting the three learning communities, filled with different kinds of project and collaborative spaces, supported by adjacent teacher workrooms, and overlooking the large learning commons, which is also the cafeteria. A second, smaller learning commons is shared by the pre-K to 2 and the 3 to 5 grade clusters, and both this and the large learning commons open directly out onto the adjacent landscape and play areas at the first or garden level. Here are the kindergarten classrooms on the second floor, the same level as their playground. And at the top of the screen, you can see the pre-K to 2 story steps area connecting down to the learning commons. The first level, or garden level, also houses the large gym, the small gym, the adjacent Sewell gym, the music suite, pre-kindergarten, and the auditorium, a multi-use space. The architect has suggested that the walls to the auditorium could be movable so that it could be open to both of the learning commons, allowing all school performances and large community gatherings. The third floor, one up from the entry level, holds the bulk of the classrooms and is the heart of the three learning communities. Each neighborhood is connected to the next by a project area and an outdoor classroom. Finally, the fourth floor, two levels above the entrance and furthest away from neighboring buildings, is home to the eighth graders and their supporting spaces. I think we'll get two nets. I got a little ahead on my reading. So there's the top floor with the eighth graders. The planned project includes about $12 million of improvements at Sewell Recreation Center, including a new rec gym, enlarging the upper field, additional parking at the upper lot, and design improvements throughout the site to make it universally accessible to everyone in Brookline. However, as most of you know, because of a specific determination from the National Park Service, as well as general concerns relating to a recent Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruling, we can't execute this plan without either challenging the National Park Service and/or providing and swapping new parklands. So that's the overall plan for the design that we've developed to date at Baldwin. This is the assessor's map showing Pine Manor. The planned -- let's see, we began looking at Pine Manor's property because they have a recent history of selling off pieces of land for residential development and have, in fact, subdivided three buildable house lots directly adjacent to Sewell Rec Center. And so we asked our architects, J.L.A., to look at that corner property and do a preliminary test-fit exercise to see if our Baldwin School program, the one that we just flew through, would fit and how much land would be required. This diagram demonstrates the program would fit while respecting the height, area, and setback requirements of the existing single-family zoning, as well as the state wetlands 100-foot buffer requirement. So really, what's most important on this drawing are all the dashed lines that show the 100-foot setback from the pond, the street setbacks, the parking setbacks, and then understanding that the building is only two stories tall on Heath Street. It's really would -- answering the question, would a building fit within the zoning envelope? Now, this option presents some significant benefits when compared to the Baldwin option. First, by acquiring private land, the town would avoid the challenges and potential delays associated with Article 97 and the Supreme Judicial Court Westfield decision. Second, while the total project cost would have to include land acquisition, the construction cost would probably be lowered by omitting the extensive planned improvements at Sewell Recreation Center from the current project. And finally, the town would retain both the Baldwin School, the Baldwin Playground, and also add a new open space within the school site. Our third option is to develop a design on the north portion of the Baldwin property, which is about an acre and a quarter. We're calling this Lawrence at Baldwin because the Lawrence School is a four-section-per-grade building on a little less than an acre and a half, and this is a three-section school on about an acre and a quarter. Both are next to big parks, so it feels comparable. This test-fit plan again assumes the same 143,000-square-foot building program and also holds to the property line setbacks dictated by zoning. Given those setbacks, the building would need to be five stories, but this option hasn't begun to be studied.
Okay, and what you see up here is a list of the sites that we've considered and have rejected, getting us to this point. And you'll see the first two sites listed, Stop &amp; Shop and the Baker School, are finalists in the last go-round when we chose Baldwin a year ago. So first, why not just go back to Stop &amp; Shop? And, you know, that site presented many, many challenges that made it the most complex and risky site of them all. It involved assembling four parcels using eminent domain with operating businesses, and one of the parcels contains a gas station, and that has its own inherent environmental risks. The concept included mixed use, including the school sharing the site with an operating supermarket, and this presented long-term operating complexities with unknown partners not present in any of the other sites. The plan also contained a rooftop play area, which some felt were less desirable, and the site was least advantageous for easing overcrowding in South Brookline. By far, this site by far was the most expensive, and because of all the complexities, we had the least confidence in the estimation of cost. So I don't think we -- at this point, I don't think we'd like to go back to that. Why not go back to -- just go back to Baker? Building at Baker would mean nearly doubling the number of children on a site while reducing the active open space, and that was a deeply concerning drawback to these boards. Building at Baldwin or Pine Manor would provide place space on school properties and opportunities for partnering with our Park and Recreation Department. Building at Baker would clear a three-acre woodlot that shares a long border with our deep Lakely Whore Sanctuary and its extensive wetlands and wildlife habitats. And not unlike Chestnut Hill, the Baker School neighborhood in Beverly Road is subject to significant traffic congestion that would be challenged with a second school. That said, traffic would be a challenge and is a challenge wherever we cite a new school. Finally, building at Baker is much more expensive than either the Baldwin or Pine Manor sites because we would also have to include improvements to the existing Baker School in addition to building a new school there. So this is a graph showing the growth, and this is the problem we're trying to solve. So with that said, I think we're ready for our public hearing, and I'd just like to -- for everybody to see, I'd like to get a sense, if you raise your hand, how many of you have signed up to speak? Okay. So I counted approximately 60 people, and I announced beforehand that there would probably -- I was expecting something like this, so I announced that there would be a time limit if we have a three-minute time limit, 60 times --
Three hours.
-- so that's three hours, and we'll stay here as long as we need to stay here. But just some -- I've run a lot of public hearings, and I realize that three minutes is a very short period of time, so -- and you may have more than three minutes of information that you want to share with us, so I would encourage you to submit written comments. And I assure you, we will read every written comment and take it into account in our deliberations. I'm going to be -- I'm going to have a timer when a minute is ready, and then I'll have a please-conclude. And what I've also found in public hearings like this, it's perfectly okay if you say, "I agree with the previous speaker who made a point that you agree with," and then make another point, and that's perhaps a good, efficient way to make sure all the points that need to be said are said. And also, I'll just say that we need to be respectful of each other, and there's going to be a lot of difference of opinion in this room, so that's part of politics, and we have a good Brookline tradition of just being respectful to those whose opinion are different than ours. So with that said, I'm going -- the way I'm going to do this is I have the lists, and I'm going to call a person, and then I'll call the person who's up on deck. And I'm going to try to mix it up, so we have people from all different parts of town, and so I want to try and make sure all opinions are presented. So the first one up is Emily Pierre, and after that will be Sarah Griffin. So you're -- Emily?
Yes.
Okay, and then Sarah, come up here.
Great, well, the good news is that--
Oh, hang on, you need -- Mike? Yeah, and state your name and address for the record, and--
My name is Emily Pierre, P-I-E-R-R-E. I'm using my work address. I work at King's Boston, which is on the campus of Pine Manor. Ray? Hello?
There you go.
Okay, all right. I'm not used to using microphones. I'm very loud without them, so--
Okay. You're on.
So, again, I work on the campus of Pine Manor. I'm the Director of King's Boston, which is an English-language school, and I'm here representing 750 international students this year, more than 1,000 last year. We've been on the campus for six years. They choose -- they come from all over the world. They choose Pine Manor and King's Boston because of the unique characteristics of the campus. There are lots of English-language schools in the Boston area, and King's Boston is unique because of its setting, so we would hate to lose that unique selling point of our school, so just that's all.
Thank you. Sarah, and up after Sarah is Shannon Wolf.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Griffin. You can hear me? I'm Sarah Griffin. I'm a Baker parent. I live at 38 Clearwater Road, actually right behind the Bornwood Hospital. I would note that if it had been cited at Bornwood, which was one of the very quick options, while I might not have been thrilled, I still would have accepted -- literally, I live behind it. I would have accepted that we needed a ninth elementary school in this community, so I just want to kind of note that. I'm on the Site Council for the Baker. I have two kids. They're probably the only two kids here who are observing the democratic process. Raise your hands, guys. Yay? All right. And I'm the co-chair of the Diversity Committee at Baker. I'm here because I'm in support of a ninth elementary school moving forward now, no further delay and no further study. I'm also in support of the school being located at Pine Manor. I don't have a sense that it's going to disrupt activity there because of the space that it would be located on. I would like to see if Baldwin is feasible, but I'm understanding it may not be, so I support some discussion and engaging with Pine Manor as part of the process, having heard some of the politics that have gone before. The goal of building the ninth school, as you have said so eloquently, is around relieving congestion in and at the schools. I'm not going to go into the details because you very, very well laid out the issues around overcrowding, but what I would say is that without it, we are being short-sighted, both for those with kids in the schools, those expecting their children to attend schools, and those who live in Brookline, even those without children. The overcrowding, we've talked about, so as you asked, I'm not going to go into it. Baker is significantly overcrowded. Expanding in place, we already have two modulators at Baker. It's not adequate, and it's not going to optimize learning. In my day job, I'm a consultant, and one of the things I do in consulting is look at the impact of stress on executive skill development, which is a key thing that is coming up in our schools as critical, executive functions, executive skills as ways for our children to thrive and be able to live in the world. If children are stressed through overcrowding, they are less likely to utilize -- they're less able to utilize their executive function skills. There's significant research that shows this. Most of it's related to poverty, but it's all related to stress. So if we don't have schools that allow for quality education and children to learn, we aren't going to have children who are going to be able to do the learning that they'd like to. Couple of other points. Walkable schools are a great idea, and they're wonderful for those -- for many people, including those who don't work. For working parents, unless you live within a couple of blocks of the school, it's really hard to walk to school. At Baker, every morning, we have parents dressed in construction clothes, in suits, in dresses, dropping their kids and driving off to their workplaces because that's what they have to do to manage. So it's a laudable goal, but for working parents, it isn't a reality. I also just want to say briefly, Metco and materials fees are not also the answer. Metco is important to the diversity for us living in a diverse society, and I want to note that. We need to live in that kind of a society.
Okay, please conclude.
And I'm going to conclude.
Thank you.
Pine Manor is not perfect. Neither was Baldwin, but that's what I support. Thank you.
Okay, and I didn't call who was on deck, and it's Shannon Wolf, come on up, and after-- So Shannon has been -- okay? So now, Zhang Wan Hang. Zhang Wan Hang. Here's a name I can't -- can you read this? It's 400 Heath. Yeah. Yanan Yang Yifan? Okay. How about Reggie Peggy Krippendorf? And then after Mrs. Krippendorf, Laura Dean?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening, my name is Peggy Krippendorf, K-R-I-P-P. Good evening, my name is Peggy Krippendorf, K-R-I-P-P. I am a proud 1996 graduate of Pine Manor College, and I'm in my third year representing as a member of the Pine Manor College Board of Trustees. On behalf of the Board of Trustees at Pine Manor and the 1,764 alumni and friends who signed this petition that is against the PMC land seizure, I am here to tell all of you tonight that our land is not for sale, and we vehemently oppose any eminent domain taking of our college assets. In the past several years, the college has undergone a number of positive changes that are making a difference in the lives of the students that we serve. We have an incredible new college president who is dedicated to the college and the student and who is not interested in losing more parcels of land. We have reconfigured our Board of Trustees, who are now active and very involved in campus activities. Great things are happening at Pine Manor, and if you take this land, it will cut right through the heart of our positive community. I enrolled in Pine Manor back in 1992 for three main reasons. First, for the support of faculty and staff, for the athletic opportunities, and, most importantly, for the beautiful campus setting. These three attributes are still reasons that students are drawn to Pine Manor and want to attend. The faculty and staff at Pine Manor are incredible. They teach here because they want to know each student by name. They don't want to think of students as numbers. The faculty and staff are fiercely loyal and dedicated to helping each of its students succeed. They provide a nurturing environment. I personally benefited from that nurturing environment and used the skills and the knowledge that I learned at Pine Manor to not only graduate from Pine Manor, but to also go on to law school. I currently serve as an attorney, the first assistant district attorney in the Norfolk District Attorney's Office that represents the town of Brookline. I represent Pine Manor College's success, so taking seven acres of land from Pine Manor at the very front gate of our campus will have a significant impact on learning environment at PMC. As a student athlete at Pine Manor from '92 to '96, I played basketball and soccer and ran cross-country. We used every single acre of that campus, including the seven acres you seek to take, to train and prepare for our college sporting events. Taking seven acres of land, which are necessary for our NCAA sports, will be detrimental to the Pine Manor College student athletes. The Pine Manor College campus is absolutely spectacular, especially because it's this hidden gem in a private residential area in Chestnut Hill. The 52 acres fostered an incredible learning environment for its students. Taking seven acres of this land from the college will have a negative impact on our environment. I find it ironic that the Board of Selectmen think it's appropriate to take land from Pine Manor, who is educating predominantly first-generation and historically underrepresented students and giving it to the -- and giving that land -- and giving that land to the K-8 Brookline students. I ask you to please, please rethink your plan and go elsewhere. Save Pine Manor. I ask you to please, please rethink your plan and go elsewhere. Save Pine Manor. Thank you.
Lauren Dean. Adrian Bowman. Up after Adrian is Doricella Kaluna.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Bowman. I live at 416 VFW Parkway, and I am a town meeting member from Precinct 16. As many of you in this auditorium know, the town has been studying overcrowding in the public schools of Brookline for years. Literally, years. The primary reason that this process has been so long is that there is no perfect solution. In fact, once it was determined that expanding in place was not going to effectively and efficiently meet the ever-growing school-age population, the town has attempted to find an appropriate site for a ninth school. But time after time, there was a problem. The Civic Moxie Study proposed three final sites, two of which eventually were determined to be unworkable. The third, Stop &amp; Shop, was sent for further study with two other sites, and yet, all of those sites were suboptimal as well. My point is, it is not for lack of trying or creative thinking that has brought us to the idea of eminent domain. It is a desperate measure, and we are at the point of desperation. Our schools are wildly overcrowded today. We have students learning in hallways, auditoriums, and rearranged nooks and crannies in many of the eight elementary schools. This problem is not isolated to one building. We have a clear and urgent need for more educational space in Brookline, and not just classrooms. Expanding our current buildings is no longer a solution as common areas are taxed beyond their capacities. While many town members may call out for being patient, slowing down, and making sure that all options are vetted, I urge the opposite. We do not have time to wait. We need a new school as soon as possible. The wheels turn slowly in the town of Brookline, but our children grow older quickly. Developments crop up quickly. While we are overcrowded today, we will be even more so when the first shovel goes into the ground. I do not believe there is a perfect solution out there that we have not thought of. We owe it to our children sitting in overcrowded schools right now, as well as the many generations of Brookline residents to come to move forward on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Doricella is Paul Harris.
Good evening. My name is Dora Kaluma. I'm proud to say that I'm a part of Pine Manor's 100th class of graduates, and I am in my sixth year as a member of the Pine Manor College Board of Trustees. As Peggy had said before me, when choosing a college to attend, I made my final decision on Pine Manor back in 2007 for multiple reasons, not just the academics and the faculty and staff support, but the highlight was the campus. I believe it was one of the main reasons students are drawn to the college. The campus is an exciting environment for students who have come from urban areas of Boston and haven't had the opportunity to be in a setting that is full of nature so close to home. Goes without saying that the dedicated faculty and staff at Pine Manor are what have kept the pipeline of students of promise enrolling into the school for over 100 years. The faculty and staff truly believe in each student they serve and go above and beyond to ensure student success. I am a testimony and a fruit of their labor. Like many of the students who have attended Pine Manor College, I had promised but lacked the support of an educational community that would nurture my growth. At college, I was not stereotyped. I was pushed. I was, instead of being ignored, I was encouraged, and it was their particular investment which has set me apart and created the leader that you see before you today. I attribute my success and my leadership skills in the medical field all to my core education at Pine Manor College. I currently serve the community right now as a behavioral health clinician, and I continue to seek out education in the field of physician assistant. I represent Pine Manor's success. The campus, which nurtured me and exposed me to nature in new way while being so close to home, meant a lot. It was an ability to escape 52 acres of wonder while studying for an intense exam. It is not just my experience, and I'm so glad that she had mentioned about stress, because I was like, I want to bring up research as well. So, it is not just my experience, but also the subject of many researchers, that the environment can create a sanctuary of, area of, or area of stress relief that can foster an incredible learning environment for students who are constantly traumatized by this divided country. The forceful removal of seven acres of land from the college will have a negative impact on the educational environment at Pine Manor and will forever change the character of the college. A campus that was established by then-Board Selectman Ernest B. Dane, who saw that it was important to stimulate mature young minds, is now proposing to take that land, which is used to celebrate commencement of those very same minds that have been historically overlooked. Knowing what we know now, the kind of students the college serves and the multiple land options the Board of Selectmen have, how can we morally take the Pine Manor's group of students' land away and give it to others? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, and then Sarah Lucas is on deck. Mr. Harris.
Hi, I'm Paul Harris, town meeting member of Precinct 9. I was reminded at another meeting that I spoke at recently afterwards that I need to drink plenty of water and not get dehydrated. So, I have my water bottle with me tonight. I'd like to take this decision about the ninth school and just move back to a much broader context or perspective. When the founders of our country were working on the U.S. Constitution, it was a very messy process, and a lot of disagreements, and a lot of contention and difficulties. And if they had addressed the issue of slavery more effectively, we might not have had a civil war 70 years later. Or if they had not included the Bill of Rights, we might not have the Bill of Rights today. So, these decisions are important, and they're not perfect. And so, the U.S. Constitution is not perfect, but it is alright. Where we put the ninth school in Brookline will not be perfect, but it will be alright. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Lauren Mastrata will be up next.
Can you hear me? Just before I did this, can you hear me? I'm Sarah Lucas. I'm a neighbor of Pine Manor. Thank you all for coming in. One thing before I start that I was surprised at in your presentation is, one, thank you for allowing comments, and I'm taking it at your word. You haven't already made up your mind. Like, you haven't made up your mind. Okay. One thing I was really, you can't hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, oh, now you can hear me. One thing I was surprised at in your presentation is you felt like you sort of dismissed the last option. I felt like, you know, why not look at the smaller footprint Baldwin School and take that seriously? You own the land. It's not perfect, but you need the school. Build on the land you own. Do it. Get going. Get now. And then, don't make the same mistake you made. Start planning the 10th school now. You need a 10th school. Build on the northern side of Baldwin. Do not take this land from Pine Manor. Pine Manor is not a commuter school in downtown Boston with a few buildings. It is a residential campus. That is critical to have that space. And I think this, this argument that you keep trotting out about the former president selling off the land, those of us in the neighborhood, there's no love lost for the former president, what he was doing. We were not happy to see that going on, and it was infuriating, frankly. And it was destroying the campus. And that, as I said, it's a residential community. They need that campus. That ball field, anybody on the softball team, the girls of Springer out there, that's huge. Every night, all the time, there are teams out there working. And it is part of the character of the neighborhood. At Heath School Meeting, you promised you wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood. You're going to do that by destroying this land. You will also destroy Pine Manor. If you take that land, the long-term viability of that college is surely in doubt. I do not see, they're no longer going to be a residential college. They will be a commuter college. I don't know how they live. And maybe that's what you want, take the whole darn thing. But if that's not what you're talking about, go back to the small site at Baldwin. Build there, and then find somebody that's willing to sell you the land that you really want. And get going on that 10th school now. So, I mean, again, some other things about Pine Manor. That water feature that your architect ludicrously refers to, that's basically a wetland in a swampy pond that floods into the ballpark. On a regular basis, when there's really, that buffer zone, when you get into it, you're going to find that buffer zone is going to be way beyond what you think it is. It is hugely, hugely flooding over there. So, again, I really wish that you would just take Pine Manor off of the, off of your list. I mean, at this point, yeah, your actions, you're desperate, but they're also thoughtless. And I think that you are going to throw good money after bad in going after Pine Manor. I think you're going to end up in a bunch of lawsuits and a new set of problems with the Pine Manor site, both physically, legally, morally, and ethically. You don't want to do that. Just stick to the site you've got. Build it. It's not going to be this perfect school. It's going to be a school, and you need it now. That's what I keep hearing. So, look back to the Baldwin site. Look to what you have. Stick to it. Stay with it. Take Pine Manor off the table, and start working on that 10th school now. Okay?
Thank you. Lauren, and hang on one second. Lauren, and then Hugh Joseph is next.
Hi. Good night, good evening. My name is Lauren Mastrata. I live at 210 Bonad Road in Chestnut Hill. I grew up... Is this better? Okay. I grew up in Brookline. I grew up in the Village, and now I'm a proud resident of South Brookline. And I would also like to add that my mom actually taught at Pine Manor for seven years, so I have spent some time on that campus. Before I get into my main remarks, I do want to compliment the architects who worked on the Baldwin School. Those, that video and those drawings are really inspirational, and I think show everyone in this room and everybody watching on TV about the promise of what our elementary schools can be and what they should be. And for everyone that has a kid in the Brookline Public Schools or has had a child go through the Brookline Public Schools, I can assure you that that is not the experience that our children are getting. This is the experience that we owe them, and it's not the experience they're getting right now. And I would also add that that experience that we can promise our children is what people move to Brookline for. It's what insulates all of the property values. And yes, it is, one of the things that makes Pine Manor appealing is this neighborhood that you're surrounded by, and that is supported by the schools of Brookline. So, I know that many people here, all of you guys wearing your t-shirts, I love your school pride. I totally understand it. This is new. This is a new conversation for you. For us, it's past the 11th hour. It's the 13th hour. You saw the expanding in place that we've done for years and years. This is a conversation that we've been having in Brookline for at least three years. We've considered 19 sites, and that consideration was not thoughtless. This consideration is not thoughtless, as the last speaker said. This group of people up here, as well as a very active community on Facebook, is talking on and on and on about the pros and cons of all of these sites. And this is our last chance. It feels like there is no other space for this school to go. We've run out of sites. We've run out of time. And I implore the committees here tonight to consider and move forward with the Pine Manor property, ideally in a way that we can work together. You guys, all of you students at Pine Manor, for those of you who are thinking about going into early education, come to our school. Be a part of our school community. It's ridiculous that we don't think that these schools can work together by sharing property. Thank you.
Hugh Joseph, and George Abbott White is up next.
Hi, my name is Hugh Joseph. I live on Hammond Street. And my daughter went to Pine Manor as a preschooler. So, I have had a long connection with the college, going back more than two decades. But I want to start by saying that I'm really concerned about how this process came about. You all met in secret, and this was revealed to us sort of by an announcement in the papers. It was... You never even went, you never even consulted Pine Manor about this. And so, you came up with all kinds of misinformed assumptions about the status of the college, about the status of its land, about its financial well-being, none of which are correct. And then you said, "Oh, okay, we can take it over." You know, I thought Brookline was a democratic town. You acting as if you're tyrants in a backwater, and I think that's disgraceful. Now, I think the first thing you should do is really admit that you're doing this because Baldwin is really a no-go, okay? You wouldn't be having these hearings and meeting in secret if you really thought you could move ahead with it. So, let's be honest about that, and let's be honest about the fact that the reason it's not a viable site is because you didn't do your homework. You didn't do due diligence. You should have known, you should have known there were restrictions on that land, but you didn't bother to find out. And now, you're doing the same thing with Pine Manor. You should have gone to Pine Manor and talked about it. You should have figured out what's going on. And you, for sure, you should find out about the rules of eminent domain, because as far as I understand it, you can't just serenely go in and do this and just say, "Oh, we want to take over a piece of land because it's convenient to us." You have to have no other options, and you have yet to prove that in this town. People think it's, "Oh, it's inconvenient," or "We don't like it here," or "We don't like it there." But that's not how eminent domain works. So, what are you going to be faced with? You're going to be faced with wasting another long period of time. You wasted a year on Baldwin because you didn't do due diligence. Now, you're going to waste another year before you find out that this whole scheme isn't going to work, and it's going to be bad. And finally, I want to point out the economics of all this, because you're talking about 100, maybe 100 million dollars school, plus or minus. Well, you're foregoing state money to build this school. Why are you doing that? And then, instead of using free, available land that the town owns, you want to pay tens of millions of dollars to purchase this land on top of it. So, you add those two things up, you get to what, 40, 60 million dollars? That's half the price of a school, and all you've got is something, if you did the process properly, you would have for nothing. So, you're adding 50 million dollars onto the price tag of this for no good reason.
George Abbott White.
This is terrific.
Hang on, one second.
No, I thought they were applauding me.
Colleen Krieger is up next.
So, Neil?
You're on.
Okay. George White, town meeting member, Precinct 9. I'm not kidding about the applause. In years past, in the student movement, we used to truck people in as well. And, no, no, we, no, we called names too. And, excuse me, I'm doing very well at it, thank you. And I can do it without the mic, okay? Let me just say that the one particular point that I want to bring tonight is the point of a teacher. All right? I taught 42 years in a public school. I taught 42 years in a public school. I taught in the same crowded, dusty, cold classrooms that you all know exist. The same crowded hallways, the same classes, the musical chairs of cafeterias, and auditoriums, and gyms. So, Pine Manor is private. For more than 100 years, if you could pay the freight, you went there. The Brookline Public Schools serve everyone. They serve everyone. And at the moment...
Hey, hey, hey.
Excuse me. In my classroom, when someone speaks, you listen. If you don't want to listen, you can leave. Do you understand that? Excuse me. Do you understand that?
Come on.
No, do you understand that?
Mr. White, address your remarks to us.
I'm sorry.
And please, let's try to be respectful with each other. Come, Mr. White, come on.
A demerit, okay. So, the thing is, we're not having, we're not hearing a discussion about public and private here. We're not hearing about the needs of a larger community, of a community that is open to everyone. We are hearing about 100-plus-year school that is private, 33,000 bucks a year, and that's just tuition and fees. All right? I'm not, I'm not castigating that. I'm just saying that when we start tossing numbers around... I'm just saying that when we start tossing numbers around, we need to know what's being tossed. What is being tossed around by the school committee and the Board of Selectmen is thousands of kids that need relief, and it's not because of their malfeasance, it's not because of, you know, not buying enough consultants, it's because there isn't any land. No one is seizing anything. The public has a need, and that need will be served. It's not perfect, as my colleague Paul said, Paul Harris. We're going to do the best we can. If you want to enter into, people in Pine Manor, a partnership with one of the finest public schools in America, come on board.
Please conclude. Please, please conclude. Colleen Krieger, and then Jude Patton-Clark.
My name is Colleen Kreiser, and I'm a faculty member in the Biology Program at Pine Manor College. I am in my 10th year teaching at Pine Manor College. One of the reasons that I have remained there so long and plan to remain there for the rest of my career, I hope, is the welcoming educational environment at Pine Manor College. I understand the problem facing the town of Brookline. I obviously have given my life to educating students, and I understand the importance of educating the students of Brookline. But I'm having trouble understanding how educating Brookline students becomes more important than educating the students at Pine Manor. Our campus is an incredibly welcoming environment, and to put a large school at the entrance to our campus, it is going to close us off from the community instead of opening the campus to anyone who wants to join our community. When I saw the plans, I appreciate the fact that the pond on campus has remained as a water feature for the new elementary school, but what I see is a lost educational opportunity for the Pine Manor Biology students. I take my students to the pond to sample the water when we're talking about ecology, when we're looking at microorganisms, to look at them under the microscope. And so this is a lost experiential learning activity for the students if that part of the campus gets taken over. It's not open land. It's actively utilized both inside and outside the classroom. And finally, I welcome you all to come to commencement someday. Commencement is one of the happiest days on the Pine Manor campus. We graduate many first-generation college students, and our campus, our commencement sits on that open parcel of campus. And so where are we going to celebrate those students and their amazing achievements? And so I would like you to strongly reconsider taking the land from an amazing group of students. I hope that you'll hear from some of them tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And up after Jude...
Judeine.
Judeine. It will be Sammy Davies. Did I... Going once. It looks like Sammy. 145 Middlesex Road. And Janice Khan will be next. Janice, are you here?
Okay. Hi, Judeine Patton-Clark. I'm a parent in the Brookline Schools. I'm also a teacher. I work at a private school in Boston. And your comments about graduation caught my attention because at the school that I work at, we are in two brownstones that are side by side, very small campus, and the students use the city as their classroom. They use the community as their classroom, and they use Daniel Hall as their place for commencement, and it's an amazing event. So I would, again, reemphasize what people have already said about partnering with the Brookline Public Schools and thinking outside the box. How can we enhance each other's programs? Lars Anderson Park is right around the corner. It's open space. It's available for events, so... And one other point is just that I heard somebody comment that executive session, no, that the meeting was happening in secret, and it's called executive session, and it's a right of these committees to make decisions that aren't publicized. These are people that are volunteering, working super-long hours to try and solve really big problems, and thank you for all of your hard work.
Janice, and then after Janice, Anne Withorn.
Thank you, Neil. My name is Janice Khan. I'm a town meeting member in precinct 15. I'm also on the Advisory Committee. I'm also on the boards of both the League of Women Voters of Brookline and the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. And I had prepared remarks, but in listening to this discussion, I'm inclined to give a different kind of message to this body, and that is, I am very concerned about the tenor of the discussion in this town. I am very concerned that Pine Manor, a good neighbor in my precinct, feels under attack. This is not the town I know. And in thinking about why we are here at this point, I think that the school committee and the Board of Selectmen honestly gave the town a poor option, that the only option put before us was a single 800-student K-8 school in either North or South Brookline. But the fact of the matter is that North Brookline has a lot of density and requires one kind of approach, and South Brookline is a very different community. It's more suburban and requires a different kind of approach. And the facts, and the facts to support this are that in North Brookline, you have devotion, which has a parent community that said, "Build a larger school here so we can keep our community together." And right now, you have the Pierce community pulling together, saying, "Okay, we know there's overcrowding here. They are a school in desperate need of support." And they're saying, "Okay, build a bigger school here so we can keep our school community together." And then there's South Brookline. And South Brookline, somehow that parent community, because they're only being faced with the choice of a single K-8, 800-student school, is going to be faced with having a split in this community with a school that is nearly two miles away from where these students live. And I think that South Brookline needs a different approach, and I think that we need to be more creative in coming up with something that keeps that neighborhood feel like a neighborhood. Thank you. And so I believe that there are people in the South Brookline area that have good ideas. For instance, BEEP is leaving Temple Emeth. We've been renting two floors of space there. Temporarily, we could move lower schools, their kindergarten, first grade perhaps there, to alleviate some of the overcrowding. I think that there are ways to keep the South Brookline community intact and with integrity. And I am a former member of the Baker School community. My children went there. I spent many years being part of this wonderful community, and I think this town can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And then after Nathan is Mary Murphy.
Nathan Spritz, town meeting member from precinct 16. We're trying to build a new school, and this, I have to say, for building a new school has to be just about the most joyless process that I've ever been a part of. Okay, I'm sorry. So I started. There we go. We're trying to build a new school here in Brookline, and I'm sad to say that this is just about the most joyless process that I've ever been a part of. We're building a school. We started with B-space, and that helped us with the first phase of growth. The graph tells you what the growth has looked like. We've added classrooms. We've added portables. We've reclaimed some other office spaces, spaces for offices, but we quickly grew out of that, and we knew that this would not take us far enough. In the meantime, as you just heard, we began to rebuild Devo, bigger, better, more beautiful than it was before, but it makes room for far too few additional students. If we are contemplating spending nearly $100 million on a school, we should make sure that it solves our primary issue, overcrowding. Brookline is built up, and its buildings are expensive. The mythological unicorn, the site that solves all of our problems and meets all of our objectives, we know it just doesn't exist. So I'd ask that we do three things now. First, let's focus on our kids' needs and the needs of the teachers and the educators that educate them. They're operating in far too small spaces right now. The spaces are far too noisy. In Baker, we have an art room that's underneath of a gymnasium. In Pierce School, we have a classroom that's sitting in between two buildings and a tunnel underneath the surface, and kids cross. This is not the kind of educational environment that Brookline ought to be giving our deserving kids. Second, we found a location. Let's finish the study and the preliminary design and move forward if feasible. And finally, let's remember what we're trying to do. We're building a school that will be used to educate our kids for 50 years, maybe 100 years. This is a fantastic thing for us and our entire community to do. Let's take on this task with all of our energy, and let's reinject joy into this, the most happy of our projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Murphy, and after Ms. Murphy is Michelle Morrissey.
Hello. My name's Mary Murphy, and I... Can you hear me? I want to belt out a song. I don't know why, but, anyway, I want to first identify myself. I just recently retired from the Brookline Public Schools after 31 years of public service, and I am proud of that. And I have seen all the hard work that people have done. I've lived in the town for 34 years, and we moved here because of the school. I've also been part of bully training, and I have a sense this process feels like a little bit of bullying. And I just think that the town is so much more than what we think it is. We can be so much more creative than we are. And I know we've exhausted things and we've looked at other things, but I know there's another answer to another location that satisfies North Brookline. This isn't North against South, South against North. It's really about where we can have walkable schools for children that don't include fixed costs for transportation to have kids go from one side of town to another. We are much more than what we think we are, and we have to start thinking more like a city, like New York City. They put green space in high-rises. We need to think about how can we creatively do things for our children in our schools. Let's give this a little bit more time. I know it's a desperate situation, but we are much more than just making one definite decision that feels like a bully decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I say this? Michelle Morrissey, and then... 56 Craftlands Road, Bontis. Going once.
Michelle Morrissey. I live at 363 South Street. I would just echo the perspective of so many parents who spoke tonight, how desperately we want and need a school. And I also would just say that I think, you know, many of us are looking at sites that were not our favorite sites. I think that that's true for so many here in the room. We all have a place that we think that the school really should have been. But I have to say that I think that this site that you're looking at now really represents an improvement on the Baldwin site, particularly just in terms of the sheer size and the ability that you have to really work across that site. I don't think that that's a perspective that is really getting talked about in town, how it actually is very equivalent to or even better than what the town chose, and so I encourage you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Just tell me your name.
I'm Albert Ford here from Craftlands Road in Brookline. I was a town meeting member here for 24 years. I've been a resident of the town for most of the last 60 years, and we've been in the same house on Craftlands Road for 52 years. Our children grew up here. We were Metco parents, and one of the things to learn from, or realize from being Metco parents, was how difficult it was to have to go to school so far away from home, when Roxbury kids had to go out to the western corner of Brookline, or to Brookline High School in order to get to school. We, I would think that the procedure here, I'm afraid to say, seems to have fallen down a year ago. You seem to be making progress after several years of examining sites and then came to together in a process which I think had a failed result. You picked a site, instead of picking a site where the students were, where the children were, you picked a site that was remote from children and which is so overcrowded by out-of-town traffic that our children went to Baldwin School. We could never allow them to go. We would have to drive them, and even the superintendent of schools, to get to that site or to any place in Brookline has to go through really terrible traffic. The traffic coming up the Green Street, which is what the South Brookline people would have to do to get up to Chestnut Hill, is always, every morning, backed up over a mile, not into only Newton, but into West Roxbury. So the... Most of the students in South Brookline live in the Baker School area, and it just doesn't make sense to pick this area. I know that the Coolidge Corner site was controversial, but at least it's where the students were, and I think the decision you made a year ago to have one faction that wanted Coolidge Corner, one faction that wanted South Brookline, and then picking a site that neither one wanted was flawed, and I think you should go back. I know you've lost another year, but you should go back and look at the sites where the children are. Thank you.
Pooja Mehta, and after Ms. Mehta, Richard Nangle. You're up.
Thank you. My name is Pooja Mehta. I'm chair of the Library Board, and I'm also a mommy of two little boys at Baker School, one of them who is at BEEP. And I'd like to say a few words. According to the walkability studies, some of our schools are not at that walkable, not that walkable right now. Our parents in four of the most suburban K-8 schools, namely Baker, Heath, Lincoln, and Runkle, drop off their kids by a vehicle. You'll see, a car. From the low at Baker, parents drive and drop their kids off at about 38% of the time to, of the time. And there's a, the high would be 46% drop-off, which is at Heath School. So even now, unfortunately, walkability in half of our schools is more of a myth than an actual fact. Contrast this with our schools and how many of our kids are fitting inside those four walls. Our schools, according to the Preliminary Enrollment Project report dated March 30, 2017, included four schools with more than 700 students and four schools with fewer than 600 students. So we do have some size differential there. However, a devotion-type project, if undertaken more widely, would create large discrepancies between student populations at the larger schools and the smaller schools. It is true, we could put a mega-school in walkable... It is true, we could put a mega-school in walkable, in a walkable district. Of course, creating a mega-school does come with some dislocations. Many students would change schools to fill those additional seats, but some of those students may be able to walk. But I have a question to ask. We know that some schools are not all that walkable now, and we know that with the exception of the soon-to-be-finished devotion school, all of our schools fall into a pretty tightly grouped size. So my question today is, is the building of a school that would serve a few students who could walk to school today, or is the creation of a large mega-school more of a departure culturally from the current Brookline norm? For me, we can build a community, whether one could walk or not walk. My kids belong to a really vibrant community in, at Baker, but we do not yet have a model for that same sort of community at the mega-schools. Is this a path we would prefer to walk down? Pun intended. Thank you so much.
Mr. Nangle, and then Carolyn Tholl is up next.
Richard Nangle, town meeting member, precinct 15. About one year ago tonight, an absolute travesty happened in this building, in this room. Chaos ensued because of what happened that night, and we are back here again, still without an answer. Together with many colleagues on town meeting and friends and neighbors and concerned citizens from across town, we did our best to prevent the result of that night from happening. We talked about things like Article 97 land swaps and destruction to parkland, and the remoteness of the Baldwin site from any significant cluster of children who could walk to school. Baldwin is not in South Brookline, we said. Baldwin is jammed into the Hammond Street corridor, we said. Baldwin is practically a Newton, we said. Baldwin is certain to fail, we said. We were right, but we lost anyway. Actually, the entire community lost, because here we are back again. We appreciate the hard work by dedicated town officials to pull the plug on the Baldwin project. It is difficult, we understand, to make such a case to people who are impervious to reason and who seemingly can't read a document. We feel your pain. Let's go back to last year's vote in this room. Whoever heard of a preliminary vote in which the top two finishers didn't make it to the runoff? One of the top two finishers, Stop &amp; Shop, was eliminated from that runoff. In whose universe does such a thing happen? Did the Red Sox get awarded the opportunity to play the Yankees in the American League Championship? Did someone decide to exclude the Houston Astros? That's not how it works in the real world. But that's how the third-place finisher in the school vote became the winner. Baldwin emerged over Baker by a vote of eight to six. That vote occurred two days after the joint board received a letter signed by four precinct 16 town meeting members who promised to oppose a referendum on a four-section Baker addition while pointedly ignoring town council's warning from a memo 10 months previous that Baldwin Sewell was protected by Article 97. The letter from the precinct 16 town meeting members read in part, "Baldwin is not difficult or complicated." That was a blatant lie by a group that called itself Yes for South Brookline, and you can't make this stuff up. How many school committee members last year could discuss Article 97? How many can do so today? The vote broke down this way. Selectmen voted three to two for Baker. The school committee voted six to three for Baldwin. Who on these boards were paying attention? Why was the school committee given executive branch power? How was this partnership conceived? Where is the written record? Where is the legal justification? Where is the precedent? This process is badly in need of management. That's what the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, provides. Sound management based on years of experience with communities from throughout the Commonwealth. The emboldened school committee exerting unprecedented executive power now makes financial decisions for the town. Incredibly, it lobbied a go-ahead without MSBA assistance and prevailed.
Please conclude, Mr. Nangle.
Which means, in essence, both the high school and elementary school projects will cost 50% more than they might. At minimum, we will leave $100 million on the table. Accelerated gentrification will ensue. Nobody elected the school committee to exert this kind of power.
Mr. Nangle, please conclude.
The MSBA would do a great job with a Pierce School. They'd give us the money.
Mr. Nangle. Carolyn Tholl, and then Katrina Shaw.
Can I cede my time to Bill Schechter, please? Thank you.
You don't have six minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bill Schechter. I live at 76 Brook Street. I'm one of the few people in this room who does not feel qualified to be on the Board of Selectmen. And I really appreciate, you know, the job you've done. For the past 40 years, I've lived on Brook Street near three schools. No noise. Honestly, I'm barely conscious of the fact that they're there. I've tried to find out how the construction of a school at Pine Manor College would impair its mission. I've asked supporters of Pine Manor on Facebook. I've actually been told I don't have to answer that question. I have heard the president of Pine Manor College at a public meeting. He did not answer that question. I have written him a letter, which by now he should have received, and it went unanswered. I sincerely, I'm not attacking Pine Manor College. I sincerely do not understand how the construction of a Brookline elementary school on the edge of the campus would imperil the mission of the campus. And I hesitate to say this, but I will say it. As a public school teacher for 35 years, and a college teacher for six years, I personally think that some exciting things could happen, that there could be some exciting synergy. By the way, I taught at a public school, half of whose land was seized through eminent domain. We now have, you know, 25,000 alumni who have been educated in that school. No one who is subject to eminent domain, probably in the history of the United States, ever likes having their property seized. So I'm not wedded to the Pine Manor option. If there's a better option, I do believe these folks up here have conscientiously thought this through and researched it. If another option is found that they feel is better, great. If it's Pine Manor is the best, I would like them to proceed. Because I had two children, now in their 30s, who went through the Brookline schools, who went to school in reasonably sized classes and received the attention that they required. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have Katrina?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me get the on deck. Amy Barkin is on deck.
You ready?
You're on.
All right. My name is Katrina Shaw, and I'm the chief executive officer of an organization called Freedom House, which is a historical civil rights organization located in the Grove Hall neighborhood of Boston, Massachusetts. Freedom House has a unique history. We were responsible for a lot of firsts in our area, the integration of sports teams, the integration of fire department, police department, as well as the beginning of a program which ties our history with Brookline, which is Metco. And for those of you who aren't familiar with Freedom House, you are very familiar with the work of Freedom House because of the things that it has been able to do for our city and our Commonwealth. I am proudly here to support Pine Manor College because, like the town of Brookline, Pine Manor College believes in empowering and supporting the academic possibilities of young people who otherwise would not have that opportunity. I want to share with you some of the students that we serve at Freedom House, who are also served at Pine Manor College. So in today's world, what Freedom House does is we help young people to get into college, to graduate, and to develop a mindset of giving back to the community. Some of the issues that face our students are issues of homelessness and food insecurities, all of which are satisfied by an on-campus housing institution that is not far from their parents' homes. So they don't have the barrier of trying to get home at holidays. They can hop on the green line. And they also do not have the barrier of not being able to study in a feasible place that allows them to have the mindset of getting away from the distractions that they normally have. When our students do not go to Pine Manor, when they take advantage of some of the other colleges and universities where we provide coaching, the things that they're faced with are couch surfing. And for those of you guys who don't know what that is, what that means is, tonight I make an agreement to sleep at your house, Michael. And tomorrow, Barbara, I'm going to go to you. And next week, Julie, I'm going to be at your house. And by the way, in all of that, I'm going to try to figure out how I'm going to get some food and all that, in all of that effort. What Pine Manor provides is an opportunity for an institution, thank you, to provide all of that on campus, like I said, not far from supports. But when they allow on-campus housing to happen in our city, not too far from Boston, all of these things are satisfied. When we brought this to the attention of Pine Manor, they not only helped to support us, but offered scholarships to many of our students for housing specifically, because housing and food is a problem. So as you're sitting and you're considering what it would be, what the challenges are with this, consider this. Pine Manor serves home for kids who otherwise do not have homes in Boston and in other places around the city. And so how would you feel if someone were to throw a big school in your front yard? It probably would not feel very good, and it probably would not be the best fit. I can appreciate as a mom, the fact that you're looking for a school. I'm sorry. But I think that there are other options in the town of Brookline that would not cannibalize and eat upon the legacy of diversity and educational equality that you set up through Metco. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barkin, and then Meredith Dunn. Meredith Dunn is after Ms. Barkin. Or Alan Rose, after Ms. Barkin. Okay. And then Elijah Ergolino. Oh, Meredith Dunn, I'm sorry. Okay. You're on.
Hi. Thank you so much again for giving us an opportunity to comment. I can't imagine, I would never want to be in your shoes, so I appreciate that. So I just want to go back to, I live very, very close to the Baldwin. Hi, Amy Barkin, and I live very close to the Baldwin site. And I appreciate that you're looking to build another school, but I go back to the traffic memorandum that was issued in October where you looked at all three original sites extensively. And my favorite quote was that the queues along Heath Street would fundamentally compromise the ability of parents to get their children's to school on time. And so as I'm a mom who's harried in racing my children to school, it puts the Brookline residents in danger, whether it's Baldwin or Pine Manor. It's a really, really terrible location from traffic. And additionally, the level of service, which is the ratings that the Brookline Transportation Commission gives traffic lights, they rate them between A and F. And they gave the ratings for the times we'd be dropping off at school for those two traffic lights, Heath and Hammond, you know, they get Fs. They get Fs. They don't work. So we sometimes can't get out of our street. So I try to be open-minded and understand and be, you know, think out of the box. And so maybe you do go to a smaller ninth, and whoever the gentleman is, let's start thinking, or woman, start thinking about the 10th school, and go back to Baker and build the 10th. Use the 20, 30, 15, whatever the number is you were going to buy Pine Manor with, and fix Baker, build the 10th one, build a smaller one on Baldwin that doesn't choke the neighborhood. I mean, we're choking in traffic. It's unsafe. So anyway, I think that we just need to think differently and think with a little bit more of mind. Build nine and 10. Build nine a little bit smaller, keep Pine Manor, and build 10 on Baker. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith Dunn.
Hi, I'm Meredith Dunn. I live at 54 Shaw Road. And I don't know how many people in this auditorium sent their kids to Pine Manor College for preschool, but I'm one of those. I love Pine Manor. I love Pine Manor. And you all are looking at me with beautiful smiles, and I hope you still smile at me after I say a few more things. Last week, I was in Alaska on my 15th anniversary. I was on a glacier cruise. What was I doing on that glacier cruise? I was looking at this stupid phone about this school that needs to be built. I was on that glacier cruise in the most beautiful place I think I've ever been, aside from Norway. And I'm looking at my phone, looking at the public discussion on Facebook about this school. What needs to happen here? I lose sleep over it a lot. I'm not on the public discussion page saying very much, but I'm listening. And what I do know is, is when I pull around Pine Manor College and dropped off my child, that open space is beautiful. And you are so blessed to have that open space. I know somebody very well in this room named Tim Allen, who's on the board, and I love him dearly at Pine Manor College. But what I know is that Pine Manor has so many awesome students that might just learn something from our students at Brookline, right there on that campus. You might. Because when I went into the Child Study Center, I saw students like yourself sitting there, and you were watching students as they learned. And so I'm just asking to consider the other options that might be available out there besides Pine Manor, but also think about what could be awesome at Pine Manor with this wonderful night school that must be built. And I do say that I have four little girls. Three are at Baker School, and one is at BEEP. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Elijah Ergolino, and Seth Miller, is it, did I get that right? 234 Walnut Street. And then Stephen Wald.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Ergolino. I'm a town meeting member, precinct one, father of two children currently, one at Lawrence in kindergarten, and his class size is 23, and another who's in BEEP, which, you know, for three- and four-year-olds, the class size is 16 with two teachers. And when you go to kindergarten, the class size is 23 with two teachers. I was just wondering, Mr. Moderator, if you could scroll back about five slides in the presentation, because I thought that was really the topic of this evening.
Which one?
The topic, I thought, was really about the different options, right? I don't think this was anything, my understanding was there's nothing salted away or cast in stone.
Right.
Really, what I thought this meeting was about was to, you know, inform the public, get some public comment, receive some questions from the audience, and sort of collaboratively think about how we're going to approach this issue. You know, I have an advanced degree in mechanical engineering. I work in, sort of in the neighborhood of Boston University. I don't tend to be an expert at all things, especially related to the schools. However, sort of tongue-in-cheek, but many in Brookline, my neighbors and close friends, we all tend to be a subject matter expert almost on all topics. So I think what this slide here just says, if I could recap, and I understand that, you know, the feeling that folks who are in support of Pine Manor must have when they come to this, but I think the, this thing was to, options under consideration. The first is a Baldwin site utilizing a land swap, right? That's a purpose, sort of three outcomes of this evening. Another one would be acquiring land for Pine Manor. It didn't say destroy Pine Manor and anything like that, you know, raise it to the ground or anything. And build on the north half of Baldwin site. So we have three options, right? So I'm just here as So I'm just here as a parent to express my thanks and gratitude, not only to the school committee, to those who've reached out, to the Board of Selectmen, thank you for all your work, and also to counter some of the objections, a year wasted, and these disastrous decisions and chaos and all these other terms. Actually, you know, a lot can be learned from this year that we went through, so I view it as progress, I view it as very positive. But also, I'm very much interested in having all these options on the table, and I trust you all to evaluate them thoroughly. I will say to the Pine Manor folks, and I'll give a shout-out here, that there is, the president is welcoming people tomorrow, actually, so if I can, I'll hope to attend that. I recommend that everyone go see really what Pine Manor is about. Also caution Pine Manor that if you read the papers, you know, small colleges have a lot of pressure on them, and they're being merged and swallowed up by other larger groups. And the financial well-being of your institution is definitely something that I think everyone should understand. I love Tom Brady as much as anyone else, but, you know, land sales to Tom Brady and other things like that, sort of maybe could be questioned around town. So I could definitely support you guys and encourage others to look at your open house.
Thank you. Mr. Wald? And then Brian Huckleitner, you're up next.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Wald, I represent some neighbors. I'm Stephen Wald, I represent some neighbors of Baldwin. Good evening. We've always objected to this site, both Baldwin and now Pine Manor, because of the traffic issues. And, you know, the concern has been focused on the traffic issues. And we started being concerned as soon as this site was selected, as I think everybody knows, who's familiar with me and the positions of my clients. But a year ago, when we first raised our concerns, I think there was time in the schedule for a year to go by and maybe learn from it. But I think even my clients and everybody who has concerns about this site, here is the concerns of all the parents, that time is wasting, and the schools are overcrowded, and the teachers are having a hard time. And I think nobody really disagrees with that proposition. So the thing that's really inexplicable, I think, with what's happening right now, is that this is a really good chance that you're making the same mistake again, which is that you're putting only one choice on the list without really investigating or knowing that it works. And really, all the evidence is that it doesn't work. For one thing, you can't even get access to the site to do the testing and evaluation that you have to do to see if it's feasible. Pine Manor has said you can't come on the site. So if you can't come on the site, you can't even test for things like, that a wetlands engineer would have to do in order to see if you could build a school. You can't do soil testing, that Mr. Pollack, I'm sure, knows is necessary to even do a cost analysis. You can't go through the whole wetlands process, which takes years when it's disputed, and Pine Manor says it's going to dispute them. So what's inexplicable to me is not that Pine Manor is on a list to be considered, but that you're excluding from everything else, every other possibility, whether it's a Plan B, a build in place, expand in place, the other things that were on the list that we showed, you know, this evening. If time is so much of the essence, how can you afford to waste a year on just one site? You know Baldwin doesn't work. Mr. Levy and I think Mr. Pollack have admitted a five-story school on an acre and a half does not work. The idea of any other site is really off the list, so you're going to spend some amount of money doing a feasibility study, which would have to be done off the site, litigation with Pine Manor on wetlands, on price, on everything else, that may or may not get you past town meeting. As far as I can tell, the most comparative sale recently of this kind of property was in 2007, and B.C. paid three and a half million dollars an acre. And you want to buy seven acres, so now that price is probably five million dollars. You have to get that past town meeting. So it is a substantial possibility that you can't get this done. Why is there only one site on the list if time is of the essence?
Mr. Huckleitner, and then Katie Green?
Hi, I'm Brian Huckleitner, I'm a town meeting member for precinct six. I've got two kids currently in Brookline Public Schools in second grade and sixth grade at Pierce, and I guess I just want to, there's a lot of parents that I really encourage to come out tonight. It's hard for parents, working parents, to make it out, so I think, and I guess I'd say, first of all, there's a lot of people out there that are watching this on TV, on Brookline Public Access, who wish they could be here. I think there's a lot of people that are sort of, you know, I think of them as, maybe not the silent majority, but there's certainly a lot of parents that have got white knuckles right now in Brookline, because they've been following this process. I've been involved personally for the last six years, and I've probably spent over 100 hours at meetings like this. Many of them had louder, angrier crowds than this, so, you know, this is a good one, but we've had others, and I think, you know, it's a challenge, it's difficult, there's not an easy solution. When a town sees enrollment increase by 30%, we have not added any schools in that time, we haven't added a school in a generation in Brookline. Our school, Pierce, was built for about 450 kids, there's currently 860 there. They're renting space in a building next door, they've sort of run out of additional room to rent space in that building because of ADA requirements, they can't adapt the additional floors. We're out of space. Kids are squeezed into rooms that are not meant to be classrooms, it's happening all over Brookline, and we've just sort of run out of time. There's no easy answer, there's no good answer that makes everyone happy, so I think, you know, it's just a challenge, and I take my hat off to everyone who's been involved with this process, sitting in the front of the room, others before them, all the other volunteers that have really worked hard to try to find a really good solution that works for Brookline. And I think, I actually think that the Pine Manor site is a great site, it would make a great school. I know that there's a lot of folks that are here tonight who feel strongly that they don't want to see that happen, and I guess I would just say to them that, you know, I don't know what the final resolution is going to be of the three options, or whether we're going to go back to the drawing board and spend a couple more years looking at more sites, but I just feel like we are at the point right now where it's a tipping point. There's just no more room in any of the existing schools, there's no places to rent for additional space, and we need to make a decision, we need to move forward. I think it's, you know, it's an imperfect solution, but it's one that people have put a lot of time into, a lot of effort to really try to think about, and I would encourage everyone in this room to kind of come away appreciating the hard work that's gone into this, the sacrifice that people have made, volunteers, to try to get something that really works. And there's no perfect solution, but I encourage the school committee and the Board of Selectmen to keep moving forward with one of the three options. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Green, and then Meredith Dunn? Oh, I'm sorry. Then Liz Anderson is up next.
My name is Katie Green, I'm a 2003 graduate of Pine Manor College, and I'd first like to thank the board and the school committee for allowing us to be here. What I learned at Pine Manor is important to hear our voices, so I appreciate that. And we're here in regards to the seven acres of land on the campus of Pine Manor. From 1999 to 2003, I attended Pine Manor and was class president for all four years. I was a member of student government, I worked for the Center for Inclusive Leadership and Social Responsibility, and I also played three sports all four years. I won a GNAC championship, I played in the NCAA tournament, I was Emerging Leader of the Year in 2000, I was a Dean's Award winner in 2003, I received a 50% scholarship all four years from a very generous alumni, who I actually think is from Brookline, so if you're here, thanks. And I gave my 2003 graduation speech. I would say it's an understatement that I achieved more than I set out to when I was at Pine Manor. I am a product of Pine Manor, and I believe if I was any of your daughters, I would make you very proud. I'm currently the assistant, I'm currently the Assistant Athletic Director at Mount Ida College in Newton, and formerly the Assistant Athletic Director at Newberry College, right here in Brookline. Between those jobs, I also coached women's basketball at Ivy League Brown University. As a coach, I understand the importance of tradition, of experiences, of memories, as I'm sure most of you do, going to schools such as Columbia, U Penn, Harvard, Yale, UConn, UNC Tufts, Michigan, and Dartmouth. I've coached in every single one of those gyms, and I know the traditions, and whoever went to U Penn in the Palestra, we know the traditions of it. You know the traditions that they hold. And much like all of you, I had amazing, amazing days in my college career, including holding a championship trophy above my head on that very softball field. I gave my graduation speech on that front lawn that you're looking to take from Pine Manor. I hit my only homerun in my entire career in front of 200 people while they all wore red, because one of my teammate's fathers passed away in the middle of the season, and we dedicated that win to them. We beat Emmanuel on a doubleheader that day in front of 200 of his family. And in that win, we began to heal a process for a broken family on that very field. The acres of green grass and trees are a beautiful escape from the bright city lights just a few miles away, and sometimes I honestly just go and sit there and look over the field and think about good days on bad ones. To you, it might just be seven acres of land, but to many of us, it's traditions and memories that will last a lifetime. It's a place I hope to bring my kids one day, to let them run the bases of that field, or let them play in the fields that I graduated on. Removing this land from Pine Manor and creating what I'm sure will be an amazing school will completely change the structure of Heath Street forever and the surrounding neighbors of it. I'm here today as an alumni and a success story of Pine Manor to ask you to please reconsider taking this land. It's not just seven acres of irreplaceable grass, it is seven acres of irreplaceable memories and traditions, and it will be a heartbreak to lose.
Thank you. Liz? And after Liz is Wendy Murphy?
Good evening. My name is Liz Anderson, and I recently graduated from Pine Manor in May, top of my class as well as speaking at my graduation. I'm currently furthering my education at the Massachusetts School of Law in Andover. I wanted to just take a minute to speak about Pine Manor and how it was my home away from home. I rushed here from class to speak to you because it's that important to me and my fellow classmates here. PMC has a beautiful campus tucked away from the hustle and bustle of Boston. It provides a safe and comfortable community for students from all over who want to further their education and better themselves. You may just see land, but I see a beautiful area that provides for the students there. By taking away the land, you take away a piece of each and every student that has studied there and is currently studying there. The land out front is used for biology class, a practice field for soccer, and our home for our softball team and our new baseball team. But not just that, it's used by students who want to study there. The wildlife is incredible, baby geese, baby bunnies. By taking away land, you're going to cram more people into a small space. This will chase the wildlife away and won't benefit Pine Manor or the new school. You say that you have outgrown your area for school, but how does that become beneficial to the students already at Pine Manor? If it starts here, then what's to say it won't continue? This is not the answer. PMC shaped the person I am, the professors there really care and made me feel like it was my home. The area is a beautiful gem that should not be touched. As the women's soccer team captain my junior and senior year, the soccer field was my home and hold memories I can never lose. I can't count the amount of times I have used that land, my home. You say it's about benefiting education, but you're willing to take a piece of a historic educational institute to do that. You sat here and said that students are already on top of each other. How is putting more students on a campus going to fix that? I implore you to leave the Pine Manor the way it is, not just for the wildlife, but for those students now, and for those who come after me who call it a home. I keep hearing it's for the community, we are a part of your community as well. We are not our past, do not take our land. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, and then Mr. Vitolo?
Wow, those are hard acts to follow. But I'm delighted to be here tonight in support of Pine Manor, who has been my neighbor for over 15 years. The college has been around since 1911 and has persevered through some serious ups and downs. But all along, the college has never forgotten what they were about, which is educating young adults. Yes, the mission has changed, and today it's a very different young woman that is being educated at Pine Manor than that of 20 years ago. And now, there are men on campus. The college is just as committed to their commission today as they were when they opened their doors 106 years ago. I'm proud of the college, its leadership, professors, and students, and unfortunately, they are all under attack and are now having to aggressively defend themselves against an unwanted and hostile eminent domain taking. Sadly, the college is being raked through the coals, they're being turned upside down and having to defend every bit of their business and their educational model. They've been mocked, and they've been bullied. To the students of Pine Manor, I am sorry that you have been dragged into the ninth school debate here in Brookline. I'd like to dispel some of the rumors that have been floating around regarding Pine Manor and its financial health and its mission. Pine Manor is not interested in selling their land on Heath Street. The soccer and softball fields are a key part of their athletic program, and the fields generate income through their rentals. There's been a case made that Pine Manor needs the money. The college is financially in a good place and getting stronger every day with a committed president and Board of Trustees. Yes, they've sold land in the past, but they've always valued their front yard and have never asked to have any intentions of selling the land back when three lots were zoned over 10 years ago, which, by the way, was done to fulfill a bank loan requirement. They have no intentions of selling the land now and in the future. But getting back to Brookline, yes, we have an overcrowding issue with our schools, and more kids are coming. We are obviously doing something right as we continue to attract young families to our neighborhoods and schools. We are not, though, doing something right by taking land from Pine Manor against their wishes. We are preying on an institution that is perceived to be financially weaker. Furthermore, who are we to judge whether or not Pine Manor needs the money, needs its playing fields, needs its pond, needs its open space? The town is actually proposing to take 50% of their open space on campus. But the bottom line is, the town of Brookline does not need 7.2 acres at Pine Manor to solve the overcrowding issues. Whether or not we build a ninth school does not hinge upon taking land from Pine Manor by eminent domain. We have options, and we have time. I support looking at multiple locations for the ninth school in parallel. Personally, I think the town should develop a master plan for Brookline Village that includes Town Hall, Pierce, the Public Health Building, the library, and Old Lincoln. Let's look at all these properties and see how they can help solve the overcrowding in North Brookline. And South Brookline, yes, also has needs and needs some help. Let's right-size Baker so that all the kids who live in Baker can attend their neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitolo, and then Tori Hackett. Tommy Vitolo, and then Tori Hackett.
153 University Road, town meeting member, precinct six, father of a first grader at Pierce and a daughter who turned three yesterday. I want to begin by thanking the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the Advisory Committee, our citizen volunteer governing. I know that you're engaging in many suggestions, proposals, and ideas that for a variety of strategic and legal reasons can't be discussed publicly. And I voted for some of you, I trust all of you. Baldwin has pros and cons, Pine Manor site has pros and cons, the Stop &amp; Shop site, the Pierce demolition proposal, the Baker expansion proposal has pros and cons. All of these proposals benefit students townwide, but all impose significant stress and change on the near neighbors. This imbalance phenomenon also seems to spawn matching T-shirts. This imbalance phenomenon also seems to spawn matching T-shirts. None of the sites I mentioned are ideal, but none are terrible. As we continue this discussion, let's try to keep perspective. Hyperbole simply isn't helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hackett, and then Deb Abner.
My name's Tori Hackett, and I live at 385 Heath Street in Brookline, right across the street from Pine Manor. I guess I just want to start by echoing what a number of people have already said, but I feel strongly that it needs to be said again, which is, Brookline, we are better than this. We need to do better, we need to think harder, we need to look at other alternatives that are more broadly thinking about the needs of the school situation and that also take into consideration the needs of Pine Manor College. I also just want to say quickly before I get to my notes, I am a neighbor of Pine Manor. I live right across the street. I think the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen ought to go and spend a day and see what goes on, because I get the sense from all of the comments made, Pine Manor needs money, Susan Wolf did cough. You know, Helen Charlupski has said different things about Pine Manor. I'm concerned that there isn't this open understanding of what exactly Pine Manor does on a day-to-day basis and the impact that it has in the students' lives that it changes. The seven acres that are proposed are not just open acres that no one uses on a day-to-day basis. That would be a fallacy. It's completely untrue. These students, and I see them out my front door and out my front window every day. They walk on those, on that land, they play sports on the land, they study on that land. In the winter, there's even, you know, people just going across the pond. There's paddle tennis for those paddle tennis players here. But that land is constantly in use, and I know it because I see every day the kids out there playing and doing sports and living their lives as students at Pine Manor College, which is exactly what they should be doing. So, you know, what I was going to say and what I am saying, I suppose, are two very different things, because I'm somewhat emotional, because of Pine Manor being such a valued community member and such a great neighbor for us. But I will say that eminent domain is not the answer. It never will be the answer. It is a hostile move against a college that really is turning the corner, that has turned the corner, that is impacting a lot of significant lives. And eminent domain is not the answer. It's actually shameful. It is something that should -- As I started by saying, Brookline, we can do better. I know we can. And really, at the end of the day, what we should be doing, and this has been on Facebook for quite a while, is looking at many more sites, taking them through the feasibility stage, looking at everything, and most importantly perhaps, looking at cost, but looking at restrictions, looking at legal entanglements that might take place. I do think that we have been short-sighted in the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen in not looking more broadly and taking more options through the feasibility stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb, and John Manil, 409 Heath Street.
My name is Deb Abner. I live at 265 Russett Road, which is in the Baker neighborhood. Four of my children went there 100 students ago, and it was crowded then. But I am also here as an educator in Brookline. I have the privilege of being the school librarian. I did not make the slide, but I will say that my library shares the space with not one, but two math specialists, which means we have dueling classrooms going on, and there is a literacy specialist who lives in the book room, which is really a closet. My focus in speaking tonight was to just convey the urgency that we need a new school now. And in fairness, we should have had it five or six years ago. We dropped the ball. Thank you. Teachers, parents, the town have all been so creative and patient. People have created rooms out of nothing. We can no longer do that. And we continue to have an education, wonderful education system because of the gifted educators that we have and the wonderful support of parents and the town. But it's harder and harder to do that when you have large class sizes and scheduling difficulties. There are, scheduling is always a nightmare for the administrators in any building, but it is even harder now given the large number of class sections. Do you know that there are art teachers, music teachers, PE teachers, world language teachers that travel around to all the schools? Because the in-house people cannot manage teaching all the different sections. And that takes away from the cohesion of the faculty. And frankly, wonderful as they are, they don't know your children. And if you've ever walked into your elementary school on musical instrument day, you will see music teachers. They, in my opinion, have the hardest job of all. They are in closets, they are in hallways, they are everywhere. Thank you. So, I know, I'm looking at this. You are in a rock and a hard place. I came a year ago and begged for a new school and tried to convey what it was like as an educator in a building. I was supporting Baldwin School. I hear the problems with the traffic. My commute is twice that it used to be. And if anybody, as in on Route 9 near Cypress at 8:30 in the morning, it is two miles deep. Traffic is everywhere. I feel everyone's pain. But I also want to recognize that we are all here and we are all passionate for education. So I am hoping that we can move on a new school now. And selfishly, I would like to work with Pine Manor because I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I think it would help in terms of transporting because it's a little closer to this end of town. Thank you.
Thank you. John, what's your last name?
Mannix.
Mannix, okay. Sorry, couldn't read the handwriting. Susan Granoff after Mr. Mannix. Mr. Charlie Robbins.
Good evening. My name is John Mannix, and I live at 409 Heath Street, directly across from Pine Manor College Softball Field. Been there for about 14 years. Could you please put up the slide of the Mr. Levy's rendering?
The Pine Manor rendering, or test fit.
Yes, please. I've been in the real estate business for about 30 years, and I've been involved in about $1 billion worth of property acquisitions and have done a lot of due diligence. So I have a couple of questions on cost.
It's backwards, I'm sorry.
There we go. So, sir, you had said in an October 3 statement that you're conducting due diligence as well as obtaining public feedback. So I have a question on your due diligence. Could you tell us if you've done a pro forma on the cost of that school?
We have an estimate.
You have an estimate? And have you shared that with us?
Not yet.
No? Okay. Have you done engineering studies?
No, we haven't gotten that far.
No? Okay. How about elevation studies?
Nope, we haven't gotten that far.
Okay. Now, the garage is close to the pond, which will probably involve slurry walls, which are quite expensive. Have you done any estimates there? Well, we're --
Well, make your points.
My point is that you want to go to town meeting to get approval for a school, that you have no idea what it's going to cost to build. You don't know what it's --
Well, that would be --
-- net space. Okay? You don't know what it's going to cost to take the land, litigation costs. Now, here are all these parents, you know, concerned about their children in schools, but I don't hear any, you know, what about taxes? You have, you know, an open checkbook? You know, if you want to go to town meeting, put a pro forma up there. What it's going to cost, even though you don't own the land, I would think Mr. Levy has the ability to put up some construction costs.
Mr. Robbins, and then Ruben Pfeffer.
I'm Charlie Robbins. I live at 630 Hammond Street. And thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I think this public hearing is really important. I'm really glad that we had a great turnout tonight. I would have liked to have seen more people here, but I have a feeling, as we said, a lot of people are watching this on Brookline TV. I wanted to say that I know it's been a late night. It's getting late. A lot of interesting points have been made. What I would say is some -- oh, okay. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. Okay. So a lot of interesting points were made, basically relative to some great ideas, so maybe some silly comments, some very thoughtful comments, and it's all really good, I think, to have that kind of cross-pollinization. I wanted to talk tonight about something that you may have read many years ago, some of you, Tale of Two Cities by Charles Dickens. My talk tonight is about a tale of two sites and the decision process for those two sites. And, you know, we've heard some things that give me a sense of an analogy and similarity between the Baldwin experience and what may be the Pine Manor. I hope it isn't, but maybe it will be the Pine Manor experience. And I want to make sure that you look at some of the similarities, and then I'll get into some of the differences. And I think both are important. Similarly, I have to say I'm critical of the fact that you have not been, as a group, strongly transparent to the community. I really believe that you owe this community a lot more. And I think you've been too secretive. I think clearly you've been challenged on that issue recently in the press, and I think it's something that the town of Brookline, we deserve more when it comes to open communication. Secondly, for some reason, in looking at these two sites, you have really forgotten about maybe the heritage of what Brookline schools were, and maybe I'm old-fashioned. Neighborhood schools, walkable schools, and elementary schools in particular, I think that's particularly important. And if you look at both of these sites, neither one of them is a neighborhood school, you know that, and neither one of them is certainly a walkable school, you know that as well. And then I'd have to say this tremendous impact on both sites. Now, you know, we've heard some of the things about Baldwin and the impact to Sewell, and we've been through that before. Tonight, you heard some really, I thought, significant points made by people who really care.
Please conclude.
I haven't even started.
Please conclude.
So let me make my other points.
You can submit your comments in writing and we'll consider them.
Oh, I will, believe me, I will. But let me make my comments to you.
You've had the same amount of time as everyone else.
No, I know. Can I make my questions to you now?
Please conclude.
I would like to know.
We need to be fair to everyone else.
But you're not letting me ask my questions. Would you do that? Would you do that?
You had as much time as anyone else, so you can submit them in writing.
Well, did you put that number up when you asked me?
Excuse me?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will write to you. Thank you.
Ruben Pfeffer, and then Julie Jettie.
My name is Ruben Pfeffer. I think that we should all just take a step back for a second. I do want you to know I support additional school in Brookline in one fashion or another. I recognize the need. However, I think it's really disheartening to hear this esteemed group, and frankly, many, many members of the, who are participating here, talk about such desperate circumstances. Oh my gosh, there's an art room under a gym. Well, guys, walk over to Dorchester, Roxbury, and you'll see what desperate is. It's just not fair for us to have this sort of attitude that we do, and I think that we need to really watch our perspective on that. I'd like to ask this group to take your time in getting this right, and I'd like to make a point that I'm surprised wasn't made earlier by any of our Pine Manor College students and alumni. That college is made up of approximately 85% students of color. Now, this is the 21st century. It's time that we stop taking land from kids of color. It just needs to stop. And when we talk about Pine Manor and we talk about its ideal setting and what it offers students of today, let's put this in perspective of what we're saying about Brookline students, that we need to be thinking about the future. Those seven acres are Pine Manor College's future growth, as this school builds and builds. So don't take their future away as well as taking their present away. Baldwin doesn't work. I am a nimb์ of Baldwin, so I will say it doesn't work, and I have a certain bias about it, but I also have a certain objectivity about it. Given that, I will say that I support what one of the women here said earlier about multiple sites. I think that since we can't find this massive piece of parcel that we need for this massive school, let's develop multiple sites. And Baldwin, I would say, I would welcome however you want to use that school or renovation of that school. I've heard from various meetings that I've attended before that you have a need for administrative space and you have a need for special education space. Well, let's invite these kids who need special education, let's house them in this wonderful historic building, let's add some office space for administration. And listen to your neighbors. We've appealed to you before saying you've got intelligent neighbors who know the land. We've told you that Baldwin won't work because of, not only traffic, traffic doesn't compare to the walkability issue and the safety issue. So let's remember the walkability and the safety issues also, and I don't see what moving the whole plot one half block away, how that would disregard the various concerns that we have told you would be significant issues in that particular pocket that you're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Jettie, and then David Bone.
Good evening. My name is Julie Jettie. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 16, and I'm a parent of two of the 800 children at the incredibly overcrowded Baker School. I'd like to speak tonight to counter the perception, and people have reiterated that misperception tonight, that the town has failed to consider all possible sites and that there are more sites that should still be considered. I've been part of this process for really only about two years. That makes me a newbie, but I just want to go through some of the sites that have come on and off the table during that time and talk a little bit about why each came off the table. The first up, in my experience, was Cottage Farm, which was near Amory Park. That site faced enormous neighborhood outcry, an outcry from advocates of maintaining open space. Next on the docket to fall was Lars Anderson. The town knew there would be Article 97 challenges at Lars Anderson, but was initially unaware of the land use restrictions placed on Lars by a small grant the town had accepted from the federal government decades earlier. Then came Stop &amp; Shop, which appeared to be universally heated, although it still had some fans, except by open space advocates who wanted to see it located there. Several of us in South Brookline proposed using a piece of land Several of us in South Brookline proposed using a piece of land at Putterham Meadows Golf Course, which wasn't currently part of the golf course. The school committee and board of selectmen humored us and considered that site, but neighbors, many of whom would go on to fight a school at Baldwin and now a school at Pine Manor vociferously fought that site, as did open space advocates, and it was clearly a non-starter with other town boards. A second six hundred to eight hundred student school at Baker was also considered, a plan that would have concentrated as many as sixteen hundred students on one school site, raising alarm among parents as well as some open space advocates because of the hundreds of trees that would have had to be cut down. And now with the recent decision in the Westfield case, that option would also appear to be completely off the table. Over time, other trial balloons were also unofficially floated. Many in my neighborhood felt that the best location for a South Brookline school would be the Bornwood Hospital, but who could possibly justify taking desperately needed mental health and addiction beds offline in the middle of an opioid epidemic? By the way, that would have been the only walkable school for my kids, and I'm, I'm just, I'm getting so tired of hearing people say, um, "We need walkable schools and this isn't where the kids are." There are lots of kids who need to go to a school that has enough space for them. The reality is we've run out of viable options in Brookline. It hasn't been lack, for lack of looking for them or lack of expertise or of knowledge of our geography. We don't have any abandoned factories in town that we can turn into a new school. We don't have any perfect location that will not be disruptive to residents, to businesses, and to families whose children are currently attending another school. With no perfect location available and with options narrowing and our student population continuing to skyrocket, it is absolutely critical that the town choose and commit to a site now. This process has been difficult on everyone, on parents, residents, and not least of all on our volunteer elected officials, who I believe to be acting in the best possible faith to find the best possible solution. The overcrowding in our schools is harmful to students, paraprofessionals, and teachers who are working, in some cases, in completely absurd conditions that many of us would not tolerate in our own professional lives. Thank you. Please build this school.
Thank you. Mr. Bone? David Silverberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the various boards that are here, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is David Bone. I am a professional traffic engineer by, uh, by training. Uh, I've spent the better part of the last year, uh, reviewing and participating in a peer review and evaluation of the work that's been done on the previous version, the Baldwin School Project. Uh, had a lot to say about that, and I, I just, what I'd like to do is hit the highlights of what that evaluation showed and how it relates to what you're considering tonight. Uh, I think the first and probably the most important point that I've made a number of times is that I think that the, uh, analysis that is contained in the traffic study that was done for the Baldwin School does not, is not reflected in its conclusions. In my opinion, the, the report tended to gloss over, sugarcoat, minimize the issues and concerns around traffic and circulation in the neighborhood and on the streets feeding and serving the area. And I think that's extremely important. Um, a couple of points from the study. Most of the, most of the students that are going to be going to the school, whether it's Baldwin or at Pine Manor, if that site is ultimately selected, most of those students are either going to drive, be driven by their parents, or they're going to take a bus. There are about fifty walkers out of six hundred and fifty so, or so students. That's a lot of traffic. Couple hundred, two hundred and fifty, um, passenger cars in about twenty to twenty-five minutes dropping off those students. It's a lot of traffic in a very short period of time on a street network that is very tight, very congested, very narrow. The streets in the area, many of them are operating at failing levels of service, extremely long traffic delays. So there are problems. People are, I, I would not want to minimize the concern that has been raised about the traffic problems in the neighborhood. They exist. They are real. The circulation plan that was developed for the Baldwin School, in my opinion, full of a lot of issues and a lot of problems, thank you. Um, a lot of conflicts in the lot between pickup drop-off, uh, bus circulation, um, staff parking. There, there are enormous number of conflicts that have not yet been resolved. I think it's very clear that that is still the case. The, the, and I, I guess what I'd say, I know I only have one minute left, less than a minute left. The issues that were identified for Baldwin are the same issues that are identified for the Pine Manor site. They are the same issues. The traffic congestion, the, the potential conflicts, uh, the fact that we had one drawing that showed two driveways on Heath Street in addition to Woodland Road and the entrance to Pine Manor College within seven hundred feet. Four openings, four major driveways. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me at all. So I would urge you to think very carefully about what you're doing when it comes to access and circulation for this site. You're making a decision that's going to last for fifty years or more, and I would not rush into a decision, uh, to, uh, without properly considering what the ultimate traffic impacts are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Silverberg and then, um, Bob Miller?
Thank you. I'm Dave Silberswag. I'm a neighbor of
I'm sorry. I
What's that?
I screwed up your name. I'm sorry.
Not the first. That's, that's fine. I'm Dave Silberswag, and I'm a neighbor of Pine Manor College. I am a chairman at Brigham and Women's Hospital, and I'm an academic dean at Harvard Medical School. Not a week goes by at the Brigham or at the medical school where we don't talk about our problem with diversity. It's already too late to, uh, for people who are in older generations to get the sort of diversity that we need because we can't right historic mistakes and discrimination that resulted in a lack of diversity in the people who we can select at the associate professor or professor level. However, we can build a pipeline and what, uh, and for all aspects of health fields, for all health professions, uh, Pine Manor is exactly the sort of place in the Boston metropolitan area that we need, that we all need, and that the kids need to provide a pipeline of really bright, um, eager, diverse perspectives to come and work at the hospitals, which are the center of Boston's life sciences and economy and help for our communities. So, um, the ability to do that with Pine Manor, which we're discussing, uh, and, uh, which is the, in fact, the most advanced of the schools that's taken on that mission, is something that I think is really important to underscore. Um, at the same time, I have a son who's a senior in high school right now, and I just took him this past weekend and every weekend to look at colleges. And every college is touting its fields and its open spaces. And why should my son have an option to go to colleges that have a nice field and Pine Manor students shouldn't? Um, that doesn't make sense. I was lucky enough to go to Dartmouth. Uh, no one would tell Dartmouth to, to give up its front lawn, which is the green. It just wouldn't happen. And so I guess I'm pleading that, um, if you need space and we need space and no one argues that we have a school issue, um, don't represent that we only have three choices and all three choices are within, you know, three hundred yards of each other with largely the same issues and the problems from the other site now in my mind, um, are profoundly increased, uh, in terms of the Pine Manor site. Lastly, I'll say, because I'm a neighbor and I see it as our other neighbor did, that the pond floods and it won't be a pretty water feature for, uh, kids. It will be a, a drowning hazard for kids, um, and, um, unless it's completely sealed off, uh, which again is a larger issue. Finally, we've all seen suburban colleges that are just, you can't even tell from the street that there's a college in there because there are houses and schools and everything built all around. And that's not what Pine Manor College is, and that's not what it should be, and they deserve better. And it's condescending for us to tell them, uh, that they ought to enjoy having an elementary school and be a great place for them to work.
Yeah. Mr. Miller and then, uh, Lauren Bernard?
Hi, my name is Bob Miller. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Eight and a teacher at the Heath School. And I'm going to adjust my comments to try to not repeat what people have said. One thing that I want to adjust, though, also is to address the idea that because we are better off than some school systems, we should ignore the fact that we have threats to the quality of our schools. To me, is an absolutely absurd argument, which I cannot accept. Um, the, um, you know, there's, there's not too much that I think is certain in this process, but I think one thing that is certain has been said by a number of people, and that's that there is no ideal location. And I'm not going to go into the details that I was planning to because I think people have already gone through that, but, uh, there, there are no perfect locations. Um, I'm not going to talk about the process. I'm not going to talk about the specifics of locations. What I do want to talk about is the incredible need for space. And, um, again, you know, the fact that we may have more space than some school systems does not change the fact that we are growing class sizes, we are losing spaces for things that we value. And I would urge people to keep in mind that there are consequences to time. And the longer we wait, the bigger the class sizes are going to get. The longer we wait, the more we risk giving up programs in music and art and other things that we value. So I'm not advocating for going to a particular site or not going to a particular site. What I am advocating for is moving quickly. We've spent, in January, I believe it will be five years. Somebody said it's been six. I don't doubt them. Um, and this is not a time for brainstorming possible genius ideas. We've been at this for five years. If there was this genius idea, it would already be here. So let's get a new school built, and wherever that is best done, let's do it.
Ms. Bernard and is Carol Hillman still here? Um, Luis Dian Grandor, four thirty-one Warren Street? Or Carol, Carolina Trujillo, four thirty-one Warren Street? Anna Azit Toz, eighty, eighty-four Davis Avenue? Claire Stamper? Julie McClure? Stephanie Stegano? Okay. You're up.
Hi, I'm Lauren Bernard. Um, I'm, I'm many things, and I struggled tonight which one to be, but I'm going to be all of them. I am a town meeting member from Precinct Eight. I am the parent of a third grader at the Devotion School. Um, I am a founding member and a board member of the Brookline Parents Association. I am a sitting member of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee that is studying, uh, two sites where we risk to have really tremendous school growth, um, in Coolidge Corner. Uh, I am the former parent of a Pine Manor, uh, Child Study Center preschooler, and I am the director of the district's largest after-school program. So I thought, which of these hats should I wear? What should I say for which hat? And in fact, I have the same things to say wearing each and every one of these hats. First of all, in October fifteenth, uh, two thousand fifteen, a report was printed and commissioned by our town from Civic Moxie, in which on page six, the following was reported. And I quote, "The overall goal of the study was to identify sites that allowed the town to preserve the desire to provide neighborhood walkable schools. None of these options provide neighborhood walkable schools." So either this study was a waste of eighty-six thousand dollars, or we can actually listen to what the people we paid said. They identified six final sites that would have allowed all for walkable schools in both sides of Route Nine, and we have chosen to disregard every single one of them. Walkability is important. It is not everybody that can walk, but it is certainly important to more than sixty-five percent of us. Um, citing the Ninth Elementary School in what I call the Hammond Street Corridor, I'd like to take credit for that phrase, would mean a school where merely fifty-three students could walk, be it at Pine Manor or at Baldwin. The rest would be bust. Mary Murphy spoke earlier, and she told you that she was here for thirty-one years and that the town could be better. What she didn't tell you is what she did for thirty-one years. She was the transportation director. So if she's telling you it's going to be a transportation nightmare, she knows better than anything. Not only would the school not be walkable, but to fill it, and this is important, it would demand massive redistricting for four to five other schools, and these would no longer be walkable either. So everyone says, well, we don't have a walkable option, but we do have a walkable option. And you all are going to find a petition with more than two hundred signatures tomorrow to build an expanded Pierce School, a greatly expanded Pierce School. The Pierce community wants a big school. Devotion, we were hesitant, and then we figured out that if we're going to keep this K three-eight model, then we, that's what we're going to have is big schools. But that is an option, and it would be a two-site option, perhaps, a big school in, at Pierce and a rebuild, uh, sorry, in addition to Baker, that would allow them to have the proper sizing. We do have creative solutions, and we need to see that we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stefano and is Regina Frauley still here? Alan Christ?
Okay. Hi, I'm Stephanie Stilliano. I've taught at Pine Manor College for fifteen years. Um, I like it there. I like the students there. I find the faculty very supportive. Thank you for giving us a chance to talk, even though I'm from Malden. Um, I just want to say, um, when I need something from my neighbor, I knock on their door and ask. We discuss it. If they say no, I ask someone else. I do not decide to build in their front yard. Also, a word about partnership. If you want to partner, taking our land against our will is not a good start.
Mr. Chris and Tal Kennett?
Uh, hi, my name is Alan Christ. I'm a Lawrence parent and a town meeting member in Precinct Four. While I'm agnostic about the best site for a new school, I am of the mindset that the initial studies for the Pine Manor site could be developed with a more sensitive approach that would be a win-win for the town and the college, particularly with respect to the loss of Pine Manor softball field. To illustrate this point, I'd like to point out at least two examples of park spaces in Boston where the city has worked together with local universities to develop shared use agreements for park space. The first is Clemente Field in the Back Bay Fens, which has a shared use agreement with Emmanuel College. While the second, currently under construction, is the Carter Playground, where the city developed a shared use agreement with Northeastern for the athletic fields. While I cannot speculate about the future of the three Pine Manor lots that have been separated into parcels for single-family homes, I can understand that Pine Manor's need for a second athletic field to support their athletic program is important. And if this site is chosen, the town should work with Pine Manor to shift the massing of the school to allow the reconstruction of this field for use by both the town and the college, so the students of both can benefit equally. In a similar manner, educational partnerships between the town and the college might also be possible. For instance, a new elementary school on the PMC site could follow the model that the city of Philadelphia and UPenn's, uh, and the University of Pennsylvania's education school took with the Penn Alexander Elementary School, which was transformed into a model for a high-performing urban school through its partnership with the university. On the whole, I urge the town and Pine Manor College to genuinely look at ways in which both parties might benefit from either a new school on the site or from a protected public park space at PMC, which would be used in a land swap, which was option one there, to allow the original Baldwin proposal to be constructed while preserving the land that Pine Manor students and alumni cherish.
Thank you.
Tal Kennett. And then is Don Weitzman still here?
Tal Kennett, Lowell Road. So my daughter is in Pierce, I believe, in that classroom that serves as the pass-through. So I'd like to start with that. I'd also like to say that I know of a lot of yaysayers that really support a Ninth school that are at home. And I know that you're watching. Generally speaking, naysayers tend to show up more than yaysayers. Yaysayers, please email if you feel that way. Please do. All right. So first of all, I want to say I've been following this process long enough to be familiar with pretty much all the sites you showed and why they were actually ruled out. I supported the Ninth School in Brookline and in Baldwin, even though I didn't think it was optimal, because I support a Ninth school because I think it is urgent. But now something's changed. Baldwin's not happening. And I see two new options on the table that weren't there before. One's eminent domain. The town really did not want to go the eminent domain route before. The other one's land swap. I'm scared about land swap because of the timeline. In terms of eminent domain, one thing that jumps at me at that list, looking at that list back and, you know, thinking through, one site that I believe was eliminated solely on the grounds of eminent domain is Parsons Field. I don't, if I'm mistaken, if there are other reasons, please share. And it could be far, far too expensive. The thing with, and the question is how much more expensive? I see Neil nodding. Is it a factor of two or is it a factor of 20? A factor of 20 eliminates it. A factor of two, maybe it should be in the running. And it should then be in the running because it is walkable. And to a lot of us, 65% of us, it's a difference between no car and a car, or one car and two cars. And we walk. We are two working parents, full-time, 10 hours a day out of the house. We walk. We find a way to walk with PSED, with whatever. We find a way to walk. It is important. So I think this is absolutely critical. I think that timeline is absolutely critical. If the three Baldwin options you showed are the three options, I would vote for the one that's the fastest. However, if there is a site up there, like Parsons, that would not require a lot of study, because we could go into Parsons and build tomorrow. We know it doesn't flood. We know it doesn't, you know, in principle. We know the engineering parts of it. Then, and it doesn't delay the timeline substantially, the way PMC was brought back into the running very quickly without a long six-month study, maybe one other site could also be considered in the same way, if it is walkable. If a land swap is considered for Baldwin, maybe it should be considered for Lars Anderson. I'm not sure what it is, but if there is another site up there, and for me, only Parsons jumped out, that could be considered really, really quickly, then it should be, I think, as long as it doesn't delay the timeline. And lastly, as a Pierce parent, I want to say I also support the Pierce, take Pierce to five sections, take Baker to five sections. I would support that solution as well if it could be quick. I don't know how it could be quick, but I would support it.
Thank you. Don Weitzman and Larry Rheingold. Is Larry still here? If not, Rachel Oberai-Salz. Okay. So you're up after Mr. Weitzman.
Hi, my name is Don Weitzman. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Eight, a founding member of the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee, and a former Selectman. So I just, I say that because I have deep affection and sympathy for people in front of me tonight. I think I know what you're going through and how tough this has been. And just want to add my voice of support and appreciation to all of you. Of course, there's going to be a big but coming after that. But I want to talk first about the Baldwin and Pine Manor sites. And by the way, I have to say, there's a silver cloud for me tonight. It's getting to know the Pine Manor community, and I am very impressed and just glad that you are members of this community. There are reasons. If that wasn't pandering enough. There are three reasons I want to state or go on record as supporting why I think that both Pine Manor and Baldwin are really poor site selections. The first has been stated several times. It's where the kids ain't. And I, that to me is huge. And interrelated with that are the other two reasons. The possible reduction of green space, I just think is a terrible idea and a non-starter. It doesn't get enough play because, I mean, this is why we have Article 97. Green space is the first thing to go. It has no advocates. It has, or very few advocates. It's easy to do, but once you've lost it, you've lost it. It's a loss to the community. And part of that is environmental consideration. Nobody's talked about the carbon footprint of what we're going to build. And if you build a school where the kids aren't, and you have so much transportation coming in, you are doing a really terrible disservice. It may not seem like a big idea right now, but remember that we are building for 50 and 100 years, and you need to be thinking of the future when you cite and plan the school. With the limited time I have, I, the other main message I want to say here is that in my 75 years, one thing I've learned is that going back to the drawing board can be hard. We have mindsets. We get trapped into positions. We think we've considered everything. We are panicking, and I've heard the panic in this room, and I agree with it. We need a new school. We need two new schools yesterday. But there are a lot of ideas floating out there now, and there is reconsideration of things like Stop and Shop or ownership has changed in half Baker School and Pierce. And these things need to be reconsidered. We don't have to start all over. We can do an expedited, maybe six-month process. It's going to slow things down a bit, but it is far better to get this right. Eminent domain feels, God, it just feels so wrong to me, and for all the other reasons that I think that these sites are not viable. So please, listen, reconsider, rethink. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel and then Jake Vilms.
Hello, I'm Rachel Oberai-Salz. I've been living in Brookline since the mid-1980s and a homeowner as well. My son graduated from Brookline High School, graduated Brown University, did a PhD and a postdoc in computational biology. He got a good education, and I thank you for that. I hear Stop and Shop coming up again. And there are some reasons why Stop and Shop should not come up again. A mixed-use site is a risk to students from predators at Stop and Shop, which was what was proposed, to have a mixed-use shop, excuse me, as a mixed-use site. I would also like to mention that I'm Associate Director for Corporate Relations for the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. We do not have a lot of green space, and we graduate some pretty remarkable students. So, the Stop and Shop site, no play area, costly, unpredictable remediation of pollution from a previous manufacturing site that was there before the current building is there, adjacent gas station with large gas storage tanks, and pollution from the car wash, and traffic congestion. In addition to cost of acquisition, remediation, and development, the Stop and Shop owner will take the town to court and has more resources than some of the other proposed sites. The Stop and Shop site is not less cost and not a simpler transition, and this takes away a critical facility from a large pedestrian community. Let's remember, there are senior citizens living all around. Brookline does not encourage cars, and many of the people who use the Stop and Shop walk there. When the site was first considered, I phoned Stop and Shop. Their VP of Marketing told me it will not happen, more so now. So, I would like to point out that there is traffic everywhere in Brookline. There was a proposed site to grow the school that is in the corner of Harvard Street and Aspen Wall. Have any of you seen the traffic that comes down St. Paul Street into Aspen Wall, or the traffic on Harvard Street? We have a school at that corner. So that's not the worst of all possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Vilms. And David Lee after that?
Hello. My name is Jake Vilms. I live at 629 Hammond Street. I have several comments. First of all, I noticed that the committees have been castigated earlier. I'd like to add one point. Thou shalt not covet. That's what's really wrong with the eminent domain. It violates one of the 10 commandments. Thou shalt not covet. That's my first comment. The other comment is to point out that it's not true that the town of Brookline does not have empty land. It owns a huge tract. It's called the transfer station. When I was there last, I saw a vast area being cleared, and I asked the people, what are they doing there? Well, they're paving it over. They cut a lot of trees down, and they just created an open space. So what I would recommend the committees looking for open space for schools to look into is just what does the transfer station do? Why is it there? Is it a plus for Brookline, or is it a minus? Does it eat up our revenue, or does it provide a profit? When I moved to Brookline, seven years ago, I attempted to get some information, but it seems to be no one was interested in giving it to me. So I would strongly recommend that the operation of the transfer station be illuminated. We need articles explaining what it is and why this vast amount of private, I mean, public land owned by Brookline is not being considered for schools.
I'll note that that's where all our garbage goes, and it's the site of cap dump.
Thank you. Mr. Lee and then Peter Vickers? Peter Vickers still here?
Okay. My name is David Lee. Been a Brookline resident for 43 years. My wife and I live on the corner of Randolph Road and Heath Street. I have been a public school teacher. My children have attended the preschool at Pine Manor, and they are graduates of the Heath School in Brookline. I stand here opposing the selection, or the possible selection of the Pine Manor property as the location for the Ninth Elementary School in Brookline. The taking of private property by eminent domain is the most extreme step that any government can take against the property rights of its citizens. It should not be taken lightly. In fact, it should be a last resort. What it is that the opportunities are that you've identified here does not suggest that we are at the point of that last resort. The irony that has existed for me as I've sat here and listened to everybody is that in the process of promoting education and the opportunity for education in Brookline, that you've chosen to pursue a process of trying to destroy opportunity for education at Pine Manor. This is the, the choice of Pine Manor property is the only site where in fact you have education pitted against education. You should not go forward with something that is going to potentially destroy this good school. This school has been a good neighbor for decades. This school offers opportunity for a unique group of students and adds to our community by what it is that it provides as an opportunity for those who can attend that school. The other point that I want to make is the one that is most amazing to me, and that is that you still persist in pursuing either the Baldwin School or the Heath School, not the Heath School, the Baldwin School or the Pine Manor School, as the place for a Ninth Elementary School. Now, withstanding all of the reports that have been done suggesting that in fact, added traffic on Heath Street is going to not only be inconvenient, it's not going to be cumbersome, but it's going to be a danger. Heath Street presents itself as one of the most dangerous roads to navigate within the town of Brookline with its multiple curves. There have been multiple accidents. There will be more if you add to this. As I look at the plan that you have, you have a queue for the buses for 400 feet along Heath Street. That's going to block the road completely. It is absurd to consider this, in my view. And the last ending comment I would make is that in the words of Counting Crows, don't pave paradise and put up a parking lot.
Thank you. Peter Vickers. And Dave Gaisich? Is Dave Gaisich still here?
Hello, my name's Pete, hello, my name's Peter Vickers. I live at 87 Craftsland. I look at the school committee sitting here in front of me and ask myself, why are you not looking at the slides yourselves? When I look at the slope of the number of potential new students that are potentially coming into the city, I wonder why you're not putting forward a plan that would show us how you are going to accommodate those students all the way through the growth periods that are in front of us. I listen to the people talk about all of the challenges of multi-shared classrooms, and I think, gee whiz, why aren't you guys planning for the future rather than arguing over a school or a location that doesn't work? I'm not a traffic engineer, but I wrote a simulation program that was actually shown on the Baldwin site. Nobody's talked about the fact that to get these students to those locations, you will bring in anywhere from six to eight buses. That's six to eight buses going down Heath Street. Heaven help us, if a child gets hit in that street and you need an ambulance to come down, it won't work. You guys are not thinking and not planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaisich and then Sappion Kohn?
Thank you. Dave Gaischak, 7 Fairway Road. I'm a Heath parent and a member of the Ninth School Building Committee. First, thank you to all of you for all of the hard work, the hours, the abuse you sometimes take. This is a hard problem to solve. There are no easy answers. I think most, if not all of us, know that. And we all appreciate, no matter how much we may disagree, the work that you do on our behalf. So thank you. That said, I've been following this debate and process for the last four and a half years, including the last 11 months or so on the Building Committee. We're back to studying feasibility of two new options, small Baldwin and Pine Manor. It's time to study more at the same time. Can I have Slide Six, actually? We want to be able to go into schematic design of a new school or new K-8 capacity at multiple sites next year. Is anyone here confident that one of those three options is going to both prove feasible and get two-thirds support at town meeting? Because I'm not. The time is now to add two or three more sites to this mix, to buy ourselves insurance that we will have a higher chance of having one feasible site ready for schematic design next year. Everyone here who is talking about the urgency of this problem, the way to maximize our chances of a quick solution is not to put our heads down and stick with these three. It's to broaden the field. We can do it. We spend a bit more money on consultants now, more committee time now, more staff time now for the next six months that we're going to be studying some site anyway. Let's study five. Let's study six. We can do it. And that'll give us a better chance of ending up with at least one that work. And that'll give us a better chance of ending up with at least one that work. I also have a second reason why I think we should do that. Because as you've heard, we are deviating significantly from what our K-8 schools are in Brookline by building either at Baldwin or at Pine Manor. Eighty percent of the K-8 students in this town live within approximately a half-mile walk of the school that's assigned to their district. The lowest such school is Lincoln at about 50%. Less than 10% of the students that we are planning to assign to Baldwin or Pine Manor live within that radius. 60% of parents who responded to the school district survey last year about how their kids typically get to school, not how they can get to school, but how they do on most days, said they walk. The lowest school in terms of that response was Heath in the mid 40%. Baldwin's going to be about 5%. And the rest of those kids have to come by bus or by car. And those cars aren't going to park when they get to Baldwin so parents can walk in and talk to teachers and interact with PTOs like we do now. Those cars are going to have to be, out of necessity, circled around a rolling drop-off and pickup queue with staff-assisted drop-off at the curb. When parents want to come for an assembly or want to come to watch a concert or want to have a PTO meeting, they're going to have to find parking that doesn't exist in this neighborhood. This is a major departure from what our eight K-8 schools have right now and it's not the only option. So, for both of those reasons, both to buy us insurance that we'll have at least one site and to hopefully, hopefully, find a site that's in keeping with our other K-8 schools, I urge you to open up this process to two or three more sites now. Thank you.
It's David LaScoye here, still? How about, um, I'm going to have trouble with the handwriting. S. Lane Schlegar, Nine Singletary? Or Judith Schlegar? Nine Singletary? How about Cammie Sarn? Sorry. Seventy-eight Croward Road? Bruce Parsley? Par clay? 150 Heath Street? Justine Carr? 930, okay. You're up.
No one disputes that we desperately need a ninth school. These are facts. Eighty-five percent of Pine Manor's U.S. students are students of color. Eighty-four percent of the college's U.S. students are the first in their families to attend college. More than 50% are multilingual. Pine Manor students graduate, check this, at three times the national average for this demographic. 100% of graduates were employed or in graduate school within six months of graduation last year. Pine Manor excels at educating students from traditionally underserved populations. Here are some of the rationales I've heard for taking land from Pine Manor. Pine Manor needs the money. They do not. Pine Manor has lots zoned for sale. To the gentleman who mentioned Tom Brady, as has already been said, those lots were zoned as collateral for a bank loan. Prior to Mr. O'Reilly becoming president of Pine Manor College, they were never intended to be sold and they are not intended to be sold now. Pine Manor doesn't need their fields. Yes, they do. In fact, they offer scholarships in sports played on those fields. The land town officials want is Pine Manor's soccer field, softball field and paddle tennis courts. Pine Manor's educational model won't be impacted by taking their land. Yes, it will. Seizing their land will reduce the amount of campus open space by 50%. Pine Manor College completed its strategic planning process and reaffirmed commitment to its mission with a five-year plan to grow their student population on campus, which makes the front parcels of land even more important to the college. Part of their success lies in their setting. The Pine Manor campus provides a sanctuary for its students, many of whom have grown up in high-density urban areas. Pine Manor is so small, it doesn't matter. Every student matters. These students that are still sitting here, they matter. We have failed miserably to create the ninth school we need. Ten years of process has resulted in NIMBYism, divisiveness and hostility and deep frustration in our community. And none of that is Pine Manor's fault. If Brookline seizes Pine Manor's land, it will because you, behind closed doors, targeted a vulnerable place and population after failing for a decade to site a school in one of our own wealthy neighborhoods. Brookline can build elsewhere. Pine Manor College has no place else to go. The only moral and ethical decision you can make tonight is to say that you've heard from the community and pivot away from Pine Manor College.
Justine Carr and then Stephen Hill? Stephen Hill still here? So, Justine is actually, we've gone through all the names that have signed up. Does anyone else wish to speak after? So, we'll take that gentleman and then Ms. Ames.
Hi, good evening. I'm Justine Carr, 935 Hammond Street, Chestnut Hill. My husband and I have been Brookline homeowners since 1982, initially in Brookline Village and after 1991 on Hammond Street. We have three children who attended initially Pierce School, then Baker, then the high school, also spent swing time at the Lincoln School. I thank you for your efforts to date on this complex issue and the opportunity to speak tonight. The proposal design of the school is innovative and exciting and I hope that we might keep the design irrespective of location. However, I am opposed to the Heath Street, Woodland Street, Pine Manor location. As has been stated, there is already massive congestion and standstill traffic on Hammond Street from Route 9 through the Rotary throughout the day. This is not only a throughput issue, but also a safety issue. I also oppose the concept of eminent domain of Pine Manor land seizure. This is a shocking and stunning action in a town known for its diversity and democratic processes. I apologize to Pine Manor for the distraction this has caused you and I hope, when this is resolved, that you remember the community's support that was voiced tonight for the excellent education you afford. I agree with the earlier suggestion that we now make this a two-step process of an immediate small school or interim swing space followed by a return to the drawing board for a permanent solution that incorporates not only the concepts of safety, affordability and scalability, but also the guiding principles articulated tonight, in particular, rightsizing as well as preservation of communities. Thank you very much.
Say your name for the record.
Eric Cushing. I live on Lyman Road off of Heath Street and about 10 steps from Pine Manor. I was born in Brookline, lived in other towns when I grew up, came back to Brookline, been living here for about 30 years. My family, my wife's family has been living here for over 50 years. We've probably paid several million dollars in taxes for that. And I only say that because I don't have children in the school system, but I'm paying for it. And so are many other people in our community in that Chestnut Hill area. People who are elderly up there who would be impacted by the traffic. If the ambulance or the police had to come up, which they respond immediately, they're wonderful when there's an emergency. It's many families out there like that. And it's already been talked about the traffic and I can tell you over the past third years, the traffic on Route 9 and Heath Street has gotten worse and worse and worse and I've almost been hit several times, even in the past few months, on those streets. I go down, try to go the short way down to my office in Brookline Village and then the backstreet and that school down there on that backstreet is totally clogged. So, this isn't any one, a problem of any one individual or against any one group. I think everyone in this meeting tonight was for helping the children in the school, for maintaining the best educational system in Brookline, which makes us famous here and around the world. But they want to see a fair system and a fair planning happen that you listen to your own reports. $86,000 wasted, like the lady said. Well, I live up in Brookline Village in the corner. They had a beautiful park. They remade it three times in the past five years. Down Beacon Street, there used to be meters that you'd put your quarters in. We could all carry our quarters. We didn't need, what I was told by a town official, a quarter of a million-dollar project to turn it into meters that you have to walk miles to get to. Okay? Well, the point is, it's like, you're going, I'll end by saying, since my time's up, you're going to wreck a beautiful neighborhood for the sake of a short-term solution. The solution and the problem are completely different and the solution and the problem do not match.
Thank you.
I would like to add one other thing and I don't mean this in a negative way because I really appreciate all the people that work for the town and the school committee and the advisory board. You have the most difficult job. I grew up in the town of Hahn and was born here, but I will say this.
You were heading in a good direction.
I was heading, I was heading in a very good direction. And it doesn't matter.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
Mariela Ames. I live at 25 Whitney Street in Chestnut Hill. I am a member of the Brookline Justice League, a group that you know was formed to fight racism in our own backyard, Brookline. And this came about in great part to counter the bullying actions of the town against black people, including its own employees within the town of Brookline. Employees who report racism or harassment, like firefighter Alston, officers Prentice-Pilot and Zerai Muskin. An innocent woman earlier spoke suggesting what a great opportunity for Pine Manor students to have in early childhood areas in the Brookline schools. Well, Pine Manor College has been in Brookline for decades and I ask how many of their students are in our town workforce? Or where are the teachers, teachers assistants or paraprofessionals from Pine Manor in the Brookline schools or in the administration? Speaking based on personal experience as an involved citizen and member of the Brookline Justice League, I believe approaching Pine Manor with eminent domain is bullying. As a previous speaker said, the community is speaking very loud and very clear.
Thank you.
Leave Pine Manor alone.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Corry and I live on Center Street. And I'm a proud mom, I'm a proud Brookline mom. I have two children that go to the devotion school. And for my entire professional career, I have served as a small school administrator. So, I, having been on both sides of this, I have to strongly urge the board that this is not the right solution. Pine Manor has been our neighbor for longer than all of us have been alive in the term. They have been good neighbors to us. We need to be good neighbors to them. And go Gators.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so first I'll say the folks from Pine Manor, you did your institution proud and you and everyone else in the community who spoke gave us a lot of food for thought. I think the next event is going to be next week where we're going to be having a hearing on Article 5, which is the funding article for town meeting. And then town meeting after that and then sometime after town meeting will be other public meetings to have further discussion and analysis and we'll see where we go with the next step. So, we have a lot to think about and thank you very much.